Typically, we talk about, Jared, is it okay? Okay. Typically, we discuss calendar items, other things, meetings we've been to, and just kind of update each other before the actual city commission meeting at 7:00. So Ron, would you like to start us off with the briefing session?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Just a few things to cover. One, I wanted to give a little explanation on the reason we pulled the alcohol item for the platforms. As you, we've been working on trying to see how we might be able to adjust some of the platforms so that there was some feedback about potentially moving some. And we ran into an issue with the state law ordinances and the regulations that basically, one, give us the ability to extend the business out into the right of way. And we've discovered that there are specific requirements and distances that regulate that. And so as we're working on through those issues, we just didn't feel comfortable being able to finalize that for you this evening. And so we pulled it from the agenda so we can make sure we're going to be in compliance with state laws.
Yeah, good to find out now.
Yep.
And I'll have you repeat that again when we start our city commission meeting as well.
Sure, happy to do that. Question?
How does all here, does that mean we're still working with that goal in mind? Are we just not ripe yet?
Yeah, we can do it. We just, based on these distances, we may have to adjust the design a little bit. There's a maximum distance that can be out away from the storefront. And I think our initial plan had us further than that. And so I know Jason met with the architect team today, and so they're looking at some of our options. And we're early enough that we can make those modifications. But the intent is still the same. We just want to make sure the regulation that you pass allowing for that is consistent with state law.
Right, that's a good idea. Will we know next week or the week after? How long do you think the process would take?
We're hoping we can have it for the next legislative meeting.
So two weeks from now?
Yeah, right. Also, just a few other kind of updates. You may have received a notice today, and North Manhattan Avenue should have opened to two-way traffic this afternoon. So it's speed restricted still, just kind of the center two lanes is what they're doing right now because they still have to tie back in all of the driveways and some of the side streets. So there'll still be some construction going on, but it is open to traffic, so that's good. We also, you may, if you've gone down Leavenworth Street there at Third, you've noticed some cones, and you may have noticed some caving in a little bit of the roadway. We've since, there's a major storm sewer underneath the road there. That's about five-foot storm sewer, and there was a little bit of void under the pavement where that collapse was, but it looks like it wasn't a very big problem. And so they've been able to, they've already got it formed back up to repour the concrete. So not a big issue for us, thankfully. The Spark, just kind of an update on Spark funds. So we're waiting for the state to, basically what the county did was submit all of our requests, our reimbursements and our direct aid, under one package to the state. And so we're waiting on feedback from the state. They have till the 15th of September. In the Spark meeting the other day last week, they indicated that they're a little bit ahead of schedule with those reviews, so maybe we'll hear back a little sooner. And as soon as they do, that'll frame the issues for us that we'll need to bring back you to make some determinations of how do we want to proceed on some of those direct aid funds from that perspective. So we didn't really see any benefit to having a lot of if or then type things until we actually knew what we were working with. So more to come on that. There's a Military Relations Committee meeting tomorrow at the Manhattan Conference Center that I think a couple of you are participating in. If we have a joint city-county-meeting this month, it would be here on the 17th. So if you have items for that, let Brenda or Chelsea know by next Thursday. If the intergovernmental luncheon would be on the 28th, my understanding K-State's still planning to keep that virtual. And so let Kristen know by the 22nd if there's agenda items there. And then one of the things we haven't talked about a lot, but we wanted to talk about, and that was just some discussion on what's available for training and assistance. And so we made cuts in this year's budget to basically eliminate travel. There is still some funding available if you want to do some online. The League just announced that, you probably got emails from the League of Kansas Municipalities that they're going online with their conference. Their registrations are $119. So that's pretty inexpensive for some of the things that they're having. And they're coming out with what those items will be. And I'm guessing you'll be able to register right up to the dates, which are October 13th through the 16th. I think that's planned to be all pre-recorded, so you'd be able to attend sessions that you might be interested in, based on a pre-existing schedule. Let's see, I think that's pretty much everything. Jason, did you want to give a little update on 12th Street? How things are going in Aggieville?
We continue to make progress. If you've been down there today, you'll see the northern half is all AB3 rock, so they'll be laying some concrete down within the next few days. They're still planning to be completed by mid-October. When they get to the south half, which is basically the alley of tomorrow, they'll lay down a concrete bed, but that entire area will be pavers, if you recall from those images. But you'll see concrete go down for the bed piece of that. So they won't get into those sidewalks adjacent to those businesses until the last week or so. So they'll still have access, still be able to use those sidewalks. But yeah, projects continuing to progress. Hotel contractor and our contractor continue to get along as well as contractors can. And they work together as much as they can.
Thanks for that. We are anticipating another round of street maintenance work. We actually had a bid opening today for that work, and that'll be on your next agenda. We're targeting Wreath Avenue between Anderson and Dickens, I think, is the intent there for that. So had a couple of bidders, and we'll see how that pans out. So that would be, we weren't sure whether we would have that, but the special sales tax monies have held, so we would, and that's the source for those funds. That's all I have, Mayor.
Is the military luncheon, is there an option for, to watch via Zoom? Is that not an option tomorrow?
I haven't seen that there is that option.
Okay. I didn't see it either.
We can check, and if there is, I can let you know.
Yeah.
It was going to be either in-person or Zoom, and I think they chose to be in-person.
Right. Okay, sounds good. So we'll go around this way then. Wen, do you have any updates?
Well, no, I just have three quick comments here. I'm still waiting for us to, you know, put on the agenda. It says pending on the planning chart, but you know, we've been talking long enough about the Housing Advisory Board and the two items to go on the rental thing, which was basically an amendment on the lease that requires people to tell someone that's renting about the code inspection program and also about flood. And it's been like months, and we need to speed that up and get it on there. It shouldn't be that difficult to do these. I think we all pretty much agreed we wanted to do that, so it's not really an issue of contention. But it's like, you know, we had that housing meeting at KSU that was set up, I mean, it's been months and months ago, and we're not making any progress. But you know, we still get the same report every year on the needs assessment that brings some of these things out indirectly, and it's time to do something. And I'd like to see it happen like quickly, within three weeks.
We'll get it on there. Mark? Nothing? Okay. Linda?
Just to say that I attended two recent League of Kansas Municipalities work sessions. One was on finance and taxation, and it's just helpful to hear the talk and see where we fit and hear deadlines. And I can't tell you anything revolutionary, other than everything's moving forward at the state level. And there really are advocates for cities. The second one was their Legislative Policy Committee, and they are formulating the policies to get ready for their annual meeting where they will adopt the final. And I think all Commissioners received those notices, right? I'm not the only one. And so they've, they're talking about internet sales tax, and they're talking about just all of the issues that we talk about here. And certainly, I'm pleased that we have pushed as hard as we have for the internet sales tax for the last two years. And it's starting to bear fruit with the revenue that we're seeing come in. I don't know that they're doing anything revolutionary, don't get me wrong, but it's just important, pardon, to tune in to the discussion. And I do have notes that I'll be glad to share with the Commission and administration. I want to point out, too, that this last week has been the 100th anniversary or observance of the women's right to vote in the United States, and that is not to be dismissed. It just guarantees what they were denied before that. But it's just worth noting that it was a starting point, and we're still working to live up to the message of equality between men and women that it is supposed to assure. The local American Association of University Women and the Manhattan Riley County League of Women Voters sponsored an outside, two, three, I guess, outside events, just in visible places to mark the occasion. And so there you go. And I think I'm a member of the Flint Hills Regional Council, and Kristi Rodriguez will be here later this evening to speak to the Commission. She is making the rounds of all of the governing bodies that are members to introduce herself. She's been on board about two months. And many of us know her anyway through her Region Reimagine work at the Chamber of Commerce, but she's committed every Tuesday night to be at some city commission meeting in the seven counties. The Region Reimagined effort was fit into three counties, and so the Regional Council is seven counties. So she's covering those other four, which are mostly rural counties, and has been just a real spark of energy, I would say. She and Jana Williams are a great team, and I think we're going to see some really good things happen. So let's see if there's anything else. I think that's it for right now.
Thanks, Linda. Aaron, did you have anything?
The Martin Luther King Junior Committee has been organizing some things, and I've listened to some of their, attended some of their meetings, listened to some of the efforts. And I just wanted everybody to kind of be aware that they are putting effort together to gather interest or gauge the interest amongst people along 17th Street about the, that's a dedication memorial drive. They're talking about fully renaming it and gauging that interest along the people that live along 17th. So that's ongoing. The other thing, I guess, for our agendas or I guess planning documents, I was curious from Ron, or we talked about the, doing the strategic plan or having that out and just kind of the timing on that. I'd like, I know it's September 1st, and I think I heard the earliest we could start is September, so probably not the first. But I want to keep pushing on that, so I know it's not going to be easy to get all that done while we're virtual and things and with groups, but getting it organized in a way that we can plan out for community input and whatever the vendor has. I just want us to do that as soon as we can, rather than waiting till the next budget cycle again.
Sure, no, that's a great question. And actually, we had a meeting today where we talked about that and looked at some of the schedules. We do have an internal committee that's looking at some different aspects of that and starting on a draft for that RFP. And so that's something that we agree would be better to likely do the recruitment for this fall, so that we might have a consultant or team leader on board or a leadership team on board specifically for your goal-setting session, which that might be something you could think about, too. Would it be beneficial to do that in December this year versus January? There's also the Chamber Retreat, as I understand it's planning to be local. And so that's typically on that Martin Luther King weekend. I'm not sure that they've announced a specific date, but those are some dates to keep in mind, too. But, so thoughts about that as we go forward? I think it would be beneficial for you all to have, as part of the goal-setting, to maybe have that strategic plan in place, at least the framework for it and the leadership for it, to have that be part of your discussion process, at least as part of your goal-setting. So I'd be, we'd be happy to take feedback on that.
Did we decide to do two years for the goal-setting, like every other year? Or we, I don't remember. I feel like we had a discussion.
So we had a, like, the goals were in place for a two-year period to coincide with the election cycle.
Right.
So we handed those out, I think, at the, you know, the last briefing session. And so of what we had kind of been in place with, obviously, we've had a lot of interruptions to that. And we'll want to revisit some of those things and probably reprioritize and probably add some other priorities to it as well, so.
I think it would be important that we get on track. So I would support the December, was that the, for the strategic plan, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Or the legislative goals?
Or the goal-setting, yeah.
I think we need to do legislative goals in December.
So legislative, yes.
The legislature starts in January.
So that would be different than your normal goals.
Right.
So, yeah, we'll definitely want to have that in place for the next session, absolutely.
I do support the Housing Advisory Board, and I wondered, did you, was that on your agenda today?
It is not, other than we also talked about that and the framework for how we might bring that forward. So I think we'll be able to meet Commissioner Butler's timeframe for having that scheduled for further discussion.
Well, I'd like for you to develop a plan, I'd like for you to develop a plan before you bring something final to us.
Sure, well, we need a lot of feedback as we develop that. So I think what we'll do is establish the framework for getting that feedback. But certainly, there are some specific items, which you've had some feedback on, that we can further develop and have for discussion. Some of those that Commissioner Butler mentioned are fairly straightforward.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Aaron, did you want to add anything else?
One of the things to remember on that Housing Advisory Board, which we didn't talk about at K-State, we're going to put this ballot initiative on there. We got the 10% for workforce housing, and I see this board playing a big role in that. So the, you know, on how we're going to handle that. So I guess the biggest issue is for all the Commissioners to provide the staff, how big should the board be? Because I think too big's a problem. But then also, are there any specific qualifications that anybody needs to be on it? You know, and I haven't really thought that through, but I think it'd be pretty wise if all of us would just sort of jot it note, send it to Ron, so that, you know, we can get that fleshed out.
And there's probably some, that some cities already have that we can also look at, but I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Did you have anything?
No, I was just gonna, my feedback is the sooner the better, but the strategic plan's going to drive some of our goal-setting, I think. So that's, that's going to dictate that timing. If we can do it December, we should, as soon as we can get something, I guess, formulated in place where there's at least that structure of a strategic plan with the vendor in place, then we can add our goals and our priorities and that. But that's my input. Before the Leadership Retreat would be for sure.
So I guess I'm a little confused. We have goal-setting, which we do, and then we have the strategic plan. The strategic plan is what we were thinking about doing. We were discussing it even during our budget session. Is that what we're discussing, is like two different things? Goal-setting is one, and the strategic plan is the other?
Yes. The strategic plan would be certainly its own initiative, but obviously, as you develop that plan, it will influence your goals.
Yeah, that's, and that's what we want to do. Did you want to say something?
Well, and that's where we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three, whatever priorities. If we have this much money and this many things, we start at the top, do the important stuff. We determine what the important things are and work our way. That was part of that discussion, correct?
Yeah, it was. A lot of these are, you know, a lot of our internal as an organization for what we want to be and what we need for the future, and some of those desires to be able to make improvements for our workforce and our employees, as well as the services that we provide. So certainly, a lot of your goals go beyond that from that perspective, but it's a key piece from a planning perspective, definitely. And something that, you know, some feedback on, is it a, is it a five-year strategic plan? Is it a 10-year strategic plan? Is it a 20-year strategic plan? So those are, those are some kind of elements, too.
Yeah. So I think Jason had presented that a little while ago. Let me kind of look through some of those things. The, I'm on the Library Advisory Board. There wasn't too much going on there. They're having, still a lot of people do curb site pickup for books, visit books. They're very strict on face masks and social distancing. They usually keep books that have been checked out before they shelf them back. They're usually out for three weeks so they can be good again to go. So they're moving along, and they're looking at numbers also to see if they need to transition or do something different. And with K-12 back in, back in school, they're also looking at different types of programs and working with the school district a little bit closer to make sure everybody has resources. And this is National Library, Library Card Month, I think. So if you don't have a library card, please go online and get one. There's lots of resources. And that's from the Library Board, but there wasn't too much going on. Linda and I participated in the Town Gown Meeting, maybe it was last week. We talked about e-scooters, and I mentioned it again this morning. I think it's going really well, from what I'm seeing. Everybody's loving them, enjoying them. We see like trails of six people in a row and all of this. Sometimes people are doubling up on them, and that's kind of unsafe. There's all, I saw our staff do a video, kind of updating everybody about the policies to regulate e-scooters. And main thing is that they're still supposed to be riding them on the road as opposed to the sidewalk, and just to be cautious. But I think it's great. They're all doing well, and I think we even made $3,000 off of that, so I don't know. Let's see, Town Gown had a few other things going on, I wrote notes on. They talked about the testing they're doing. They're doing some surveillance testing, just picking random groups of students, just to test them and see how everybody's doing, just to get a random sample. They're isolating and quarantining on-campus students. They have dorms ready for them. I'm sure everybody knows about those by now. They, and I think Ron spoke to it this morning, or maybe it was Linda, they were able to get all of their census information in for all the students that were here on August 1st or before, so that each individual student didn't have to fill out each form. They were able to send in all of those.
By April 1st, yeah.
By April 1st, right. K-State football protocols are in place. They're working on staffing for that. NBAF has, I think this was from the, I don't remember if this was from Town Gown or if it was from the Recovery Task Force. I'm getting all my meetings confused. From NBAF, 46% are living in Manhattan and 20% are living about 10-mile drive, is what I heard. From Town Gown, Linda Cook mentioned that an auditorium will probably be closed in close to three years, if anybody has looking at options for other types of indoor pools. E-scooter stuff, childcare has been a big, big topic for USD 383 for the Recovery Task Force, as well as for businesses. K-12 is hybrid form, as we all know, but there's also a lot of childcare needs in our communities and instructional needs. Boys and Girls Club is one option. They're looking at churches also as another option. Mark had mentioned earlier about regulations and how to revamp some of those or look at doing those a little bit differently so we can be more open for childcare and instructional pieces. I think they're discussing right now, because our numbers have spiked a little bit, to see if K-State, as well as K-12, are having those discussions about when they might transition to online or stay in person or what all of those forms are going to look like. That's it from all of my meetings. I think as we talk about other things to put on the agenda, I had discussed with Ron, and I had mentioned it to the Commission earlier, about a Diversity Inclusion Task Force group. And I'm working with, I spoke with Annie Cook from the Human Rights Advisory Board and some of the things they're doing, and talking to other cities to see what that might look like, just as a task force. This is different than what we have in the Human Resources Advisory Board. They're very different than what this is looking like. So that'll come up on some agenda in the near future, and we will work through all of those things. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Brenda, did you want to add anything? Dennis? Jared? Tammy? Updates? Nothing? Oh, okay, well, we're a half hour ahead.
Jared, do you want to give a, just an up-to-date on the link on the scooters? Just kind of where we're at and some of the challenges and adjustments that are being made?
Yeah, I did have a, I have a standing meeting with Link and Adrian at K-State every Tuesday for the first month of the launch. Started out at about 150 scooters on August 15th. That's increased now to, they have an average active fleet of scooters in the community and on campus of about 342 during the day. They have 500 total in town. But of course, they're rebalancing, charging, doing maintenance on scooters, so on average about 350 a day. Peak ride time has been Saturdays, and then the time period, actually, 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so mostly when people are getting off work, doing activities after the day. On average, we're seeing anywhere around 1,000 to 1,500 rides per day. Total rides to date is 18,600. And if you recall, we have a revenue sharing component of our agreement with Link, so 25 cents a ride. So thus far, the revenue sharing portion has generated $4,500. And I've spoke with Linda Cook, and as we discussed, we're going to put that money into the City University Fund. And then, of course, we'll get monthly data reports from them to talk about where those rides are originating and just some more full data and metrics on how the ride sharing is going. Evan Lockmeyer is the local operations manager. He managed a fleet of scooters. Evan Lockmeyer is the local operations manager, he managed a fleet of scooters in Stillwater at OSU, and they've hired 10 employees. They have eight local employees who do rebalancing throughout the day, they have three shifts, one in the morning to put out all the scooters, one in the afternoon, rebalancing, you know, doing sweeps throughout the campus, Aggieville downtown, and then one at night to pick up scooters. If you see a big white panel van with a big Link logo on it, that's them, they're, they're loading up their scooters at night, so they have eight people rebalancing, one mechanic and one supervisor who oversees all of them, and then there's Evan, who's the local operations manager. They have been seeing an average response time of about an hour, which, per our agreement, they have to respond to any complaint within two hours, and really, about 50/50% of the time, sometimes they, they get those complaints, and then they go to where the complaint is, and someone already rented the scooter and moved it. So, you know, they're working to facilitate all the rules and ordinances that are in place, to ensure safe riding, safe parking. And then, yeah, the last stat that they gave us was about, on average, each ride is 15 minutes long that they're seeing, and average distance is about 1.72 miles. So, people are using it to get to that last leg of where they need to be, as, you know, originally intended with the program. Are there any questions?
Did we partner up with Green Apple Bikes?
They did, yeah, and Jonathan Rivers was actually on that Facebook, Facebook Live event that we did, so they are eventually gonna share a warehouse together. Right now, Link is at the old Larson Construction Building on South Manhattan Avenue, south of town. Eventually, they're gonna share a warehouse, and what Link's crew does is they pick up and do what the former Green Apple Bike volunteers used to do. So they're looking out, and they're gonna do staging and rebalancing as well for Green Apple Bikes, which is, which is a plus, so they don't have to rely completely on, on volunteers. Once, maybe things are back to normal, the original intent was to do a lot of in-person public engagement training, you know, they were gonna go to the Weekend of Welcome, and they were gonna go to all the events downtown and in Aggieville to, you know, educate and show people the scooters, unfortunately, that's not happening right now. So really, their main focus is communicating through the app, as well as, you know, they have their Link employees doing rebalancing, so they are, you know, approaching people who may have issues with the app, and talking to them, and showing them how to ride if there's questions, so, so that's really where we're at right now, and we're trying to do our best via social media to educate folks on the rules of the road. RCPD's been putting out a lot of content, too, on their social media page.
Thanks for that, Jared.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One is, if somebody has an issue with the scooters, what's the best way to report it?
So on each scooter, there is contact information, that's Link Customer Support, they have an email and a direct phone number that anyone can contact. If, for one example, if they don't know how to use a scooter, or if there's a problem with the app, they feel like they've been overcharged, there's that issue, there's also if they feel like
Yeah, that
There's a scooter in their yard, or a scooter's improperly parked, they can use that contact information as well.
Okay, we're talking about, just say, an average citizen, I get a couple of emails on this, they don't have the Link thing downloaded on their phone, because they don't plan on using it, but they got an issue about how somebody's driving a scooter, where it's been dropped off, I mean, they could put it on the City Reported app, but then it winds up being a city issue, I was just wondering if there was some quick way to contact them?
There's an email, and I, I can provide it to commissioners, if that's helpful, that it can be forwarded directly to Link, it's support@link.city is their email, and they get those information, and then they process that directly to our local ops team, and they
Okay, 'cause I'd like to
Work out those issues, I can definitely
I'd like to just see that publicized, you know, 'cause I, I don't have it handy, and I, and I know that if I use the City Reported app, then it just winds up being more work for, you know, city staff, and if we can cut that out and get it straight to them, and they react, and that would be
Yep.
A better way to make that happen, or even if there was some way we could get our Reported app, you know, because you've got that set up where it goes to departments, to where you could, you know, put something in there that would automatically, you report it on the Reported app, and it goes to Link, and you don't have to deal with it.
Yeah.
I think that may be possible, I don't know if you've thought about that.
Yeah, we can definitely
But, but I think that'd be helpful, I really like the Reported app, that thing's been working great, you know, getting, getting things streamlined, and, and the other reason I thought that's important, I have gotten some emails on the, on the geo fencing, I guess they've made some adjustments already, where the scooters have been in the wrong places, sometimes on sidewalks, and apparently, they react rather quickly on that.
Yep.
So that works, I, I think they, they get a go on that. And then my last comment is, you know, we were, we were talking about these platforms downtown, and it cuts some of the parking out, and I'm just wondering, how many of these scooters get put down by the parking garage? Because in my mind, you know, we got a parking garage that's a little bit away from points, but if e-scooters were put there, people could, you know, drive their car, drop off all their passengers, park in the parking garage, and then run an e-scooter to get up to points, so, you know, you don't have a whole bunch of people riding it, but just the driver, and maybe we could get the use of that parking garage be used more, and, and I don't know what their distribution is for putting them down there, but there would need to be sufficient, you know, e-scooters down there to make that connection, and I think that may be a big, big deal when we get those platforms out there, because we're gonna, we're gonna cut some of the parking down, and we may as well capitalize on this thing.
Yeah, I can definitely let Link know about that. If I can get it, I'll, I'll send it to you, they showed me a heat map of kind of where the rides are, it's real red around campus in Aggieville, and east campus where those, you know, residential areas are, they are seeing ridership downtown, they're working, they're working closely with Gina, they are, if you've seen some of the signage in Aggieville, they're getting some of that for downtown as well, I'll pass along the, the part about the parking garage. The geo fencing is working really well on the sidewalks, they don't work on the sidewalks, if you do see someone on the sidewalk on a scooter, they're likely pushing it, because it, it stops, but, you know, hopefully, that's cumbersome enough for that person to be like, okay, I'm gonna get on the street. So they definitely can't ride them on the sidewalks in Aggieville or downtown, which is good.
Yeah, they are utilizing them in downtown, I see, I thought it was great, because we've always had that little piece of transportation problem from downtown to Aggieville, but I see students and adults, everybody, even on points, and so if they have lunch, dinner, shop, whatever it is, then they whiz back to wherever they came from. Easy on parking? So I think, yeah, I think people are enjoying them. In winter months, it'll be different, but right now, they're definitely enjoying it. And it shuts off at 10:00, or do they pick it up at 10:00? I don't, because I see them even after 10:00.
Yeah, the scooters shut off at 10:00, if, if you have a ride that, it's not gonna, you know, say you rent a scooter at 9:45, and you keep riding it past 10:00, it's not gonna automatically shut off, so it's gonna wait till your ride has ended for that to occur. And then it, it may be possible that people are seeing some of the workers riding them around, putting them
Collecting them.
Into the vehicles, but they are supposed to, they, they do shut off if they're not rented at 10:00, and then once an individual stops their ride, it's no longer rentable again.
I'm, Jared, I'm curious about the, the geo fencing, and it, so do you have a map, so we could see where, or is it still in motion? I think last time you talked, you said that there were, there were tinkering with it and changing it, so I'm just wondering if it's settled yet?
Yeah, so we have the map for, that we agreed upon for our city zones, which is essentially Aggieville and downtown.
Is it on our website?
It, it's in the agreement, and, and we have that posted, so yes.
Okay.
There are other geo fences that they create that are outside of our control, on private, as an example, I got Michelle Jones at USC 383 in touch with Link, so that they could put no-ride zones in schools, because they didn't want them in certain schools and school properties. That's a, you know, that's their kind of conversation that, that they do, and then of course, the university has their own geo fencing plan.
Right.
And they do have a, and I'll try and get a link to it, they have a Google map of basically all of their geo fences, and where their parking zones are, and they're updating those regularly, so I'll try and get that out to you.
Okay, because we haven't had an update on that at all.
Yeah, I, I think it's been working pretty well, I get, you know, I was watching some of stuff on social media, there's only been a few, few complaints, and, and as long as they can fix the geo fencing, one that I thought was humorous, that somebody reported, was I guess a couple of kids drove Link scooters through a splash park, what, last week, which seems dumb to drive it through the splash park when there's people in there, but somebody did, so maybe we can geo fence that.
That's, that's a good, good idea, and we certainly can, so.
Yusha mentioned the, that the personnel at, at NBAF, they have hired about 200, 199 was the last report I heard, of the 400 that they plan to hire when it's open. And Linda, I saw at the ITGA meeting last week, I asked Linda Cook, if we could get an update again, because I thought it was very telling a couple of years ago, when she was able to give us statistics on K-State employees and where they're living, and at that time, it was about 40%, I think, seemed like it, and so I'd like, I, I think it'd be important, with our, with the growth happening outside of Manhattan, I think it would be helpful for us to get a new assessment, so I've asked her for that information, and hopefully, she'll be probably providing it to you, Ron, and to distribute to the rest of us, so at least that would be a good route to go, that'd be interesting for all of us.
Very good. The mayor mentioned some of the discussion of the task force meeting last week relative to childcare, and I just wanted you to know that we appreciate the commission's support of our new software called PayLawCity, that has really been able to help us implement not only our new payroll system, but I can assure you that Tammy could speak for hours, if I would let her, on the benefits of it, just simple surveys of staff, communication among different groups, to be able to, to have a dialogue on different subject matters, so it's, we've created these communication groups, and, and so it's really been a great benefit for us, and we're, we're still learning about it, and all the great things it can do for us, so, but it's really streamed things lines well, and one of those surveys that we did for our employees was about childcare, and how many are, of course, we have quite a few employees that are in the USD 383 system, and we have quite a few employees that are not in the USD 383 system, they're in surrounding communities, in the different systems that those schools have employed, but one of the statistics I wanted to share with you as a result of that, we have about 45% of our employees have K through 12-aged children, so you can see that the hybrid system in itself has an impact on those working families, and so those working parents, and so if we go all online, that even is gonna have an even more significant impact in that regard. And so we've also, one of the things we talked about at the task force, that KDAG has recently approved, is called a learning academy, and a learning academy is not a licensed childcare operation, it's something that we basically can provide monitors, it's something that can serve potentially as a drop-off point for parents to, to have their kids be monitored and work on some of their online school activities while they could go to work, so it's a similar type event. We are exploring implementing that for some of our employees, we have some, I would say around less than 30 that are interested even with the hybrid model, and then there are about that many more if we were to go all online, so it's something we're looking at through our Parks and Rec Department, some of that we can provide with our own employees, but we would need to hire some additional seasonal staff to be able to help us with some of that, if they are to expand it, looking at the zoo and the Discovery Center, where we did some of our camps this summer, which were very well utilized. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, wanted to make you aware that that's a significant number of employees that could be impacted by that, and obviously, if they're all at home, helping their kids with online school, they're not at work, which has an impact on the service levels that we provide, so, just wanted to make you aware of it.
I think that would help a lot. Can you, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't have this information, can you tell me if Riley Schools are also doing a hybrid, and if Junction City is also doing a hybrid? I don't know what, what they're doing. All in class for Riley? Five days a week?
I think all the neighborhood, the, the area schools are
In person?
Are in person. I'm not sure, Junction hasn't started yet, or did they just start?
Junction started yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay.
They're in person?
Five days a week?
We're the only hybrid.
We're the only hybrid, okay, okay. That's important to know, because like you said, we have staff in all of those areas.
Right.
And, so, yeah, it depends on, and each, each area has a different metric as far as their own, the cases as they look at, Junction City has different, and I don't, I don't know what options they're all looking at, but that might be something that I might ask them to put, and send us a few notes on, if we're looking at that for, for students and our families here, but yeah. It's, that's what makes it hard, that everybody has their own plan. Dennis?
I see, Mayor, there's been a couple references to the Manhattan area Recovery Task Force, and so I'll give an update on that. Part of the conversation that Ron just mentioned was about childcare, but the task force is still meeting, about 24 members in the community, the next meeting will be Thursday, September 10th, at 2:00 p.m., they're meeting every other week, and one of the outgrowth issues that have come out of that is the effort for MHK SafeAndOpen.org, and that's the campaign to get businesses and individuals in our community to take a pledge to help promote our safety protocols, which means following the area local orders, masking, doing the social distancing, using the hand sanitizers, so there is some individual responsibility people can take, but also giving consumers confidence when they go into businesses, that they can see through this campaign, those businesses that have taken the pledge to maintain the safety in our community for COVID-19. The status update today is that we have about 120 businesses that have taken the pledge and agreed to follow these protocols of masking, and for our local health orders, and we have about 45 individuals who have taken that pledge as well, and so they continue to grow. It is a regional effort, as well as a city effort, so you can find the information online at MHKSafeAndOpen.org, or outlying communities can go to Flint Hills SafeAndOpen.org. But otherwise, if people are so interested, the task force, Recovery Task Force is still meeting every other week for about two hours, and it's on government channel three for Cox, it's on the City of Manhattan webpage, and it's also on Facebook Live at 2:00. Next meeting's September 10th.
Thanks a lot, Dennis. One of the things, Ron, I wanted to ask you is, I've, and I've, you know, sent you a couple of emails, people are having different questions about their water bills, can you just let us know how the process works, how many letters do they get, is there anything that we've made change differently during this pandemic phase, and people just, I'm not sure they have all the information that they need.
So I'm probably not the best one to give this response, but the, I mean, generally, the, I believe residents would get two notices before there was a, a turnoff component, we're, since the, we're no longer on the no-turnoff component, but we certainly will work with individuals if they have a need for payment assistance, and, and certainly, our finance department can assist them with that, so, again, there's several contacts made with the homeowner prior to them, they'll get a turnoff notice, and then there's still a contact prior to them actually going to turn off the water.
Okay, yeah, and then the whole eviction thing, too, since the governor, I think, extended that, I don't know if we have anything to do with that, or if that's basically on landlords?
Yeah, that's, that's on landlords.
Any other updates or comments, then we can wait for about eight minutes and start the official meeting, so if anybody needs a break, this is the time. So if anybody needs a break, this is the time.
You give my email, I'll answer you. Thank you. Are we gonna use this?
Yeah, well. I don't know. You're right. You're right. I'm just gonna.
Yeah, I didn't. He's out here with.
Yeah, I just didn't. We can keep him back and retake that. Couldn't turn that.
Okay.
So you should be able to. Okay, can you read that?
Yes, I can.
Well, that's your whole memo thing, and then right here is your next PowerPoint. Yeah. So whatever it is that they're doing, they come up, you should be able to just go down here.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If something goes wrong, something goes wrong, we'll just reload it.
Okay.
Okay. But I'll be.
Andy says.
Very good.
They really want us on a ballgame.
I'm gonna.
They're gonna.
They're really.
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 And the local American Association of University Women and the local League of Women Voters marked the occasion with several outdoor events. And to call attention to it, it's hard to get together these days. So that was a way that several dressed in the suffragette clothing, anyway, era clothing. And I just wanted to mark that as a because, you know, it's something that is still in progress. And we have to keep working at it. Even though we have a law, 100 years later, there are still issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any? Okay. I have a few comments. I did want to say the census 2020 is still open. So please, if you have not taken a few minutes to just go online and take a quick census, please do so. There might be somebody knocking on your door, just a friendly face, trying to make sure we have record of everyone that lives in our county. We are very dependent on funds from the federal government as well as state government, and often they're dependent on our population. So it's extremely important that we have an accurate count of what we have in our community. I think September 30th is the last day for that. If you haven't done so, please do so. All the school districts, I believe, have opened. We were just discussing that earlier in our briefing session. Hopefully, everybody has an excellent academic year. We will all do our part to make sure our children can stay in school and parents can also work in their workplace or if they're working remotely. And that means following all the safety guidelines of wearing a face mask, managing a six-feet distancing, and washing your hands frequently. More so, this is what the school districts are going to look at if they need to transition to online. And it's upon us to make sure that our children are getting the best education possible under different challenges that we're facing now. I think football protocols have been put out for at least USD 383 and 4K state. So if you are planning on attending any of those games, make sure you check on their website. It is very different. Their capacity levels are very different. Tailgating, what you need to wear, face masks, all of these things are very new to us. So just get yourself acquainted if you choose to participate in any of those activities. Labor Day weekend is also coming up. I know people are going to be moving and gathering and getting together and having a good time. We encourage you to have a good time. But once again, hopefully, you will follow the protocols to keep our community safe and keep our schools going as we move forward for this academic year. With that said, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Ron, did you want to update? I think our agenda has changed a little bit before we move forward.
It has, Mayor. It actually, item B on the general agenda, which was to be the discussion of the temporary use of the city sidewalk or public plaza for platform, outdoor dining areas downtown, and the sale and service and consumption of alcohol on those platforms. That item has been removed by city administration to further look at some of the state law impacts relative to distancing from those storefronts. And so we ran across some new information, and we wanted to make sure that what you passed will allow the what we had indicated at the last meeting that you approved the platforms. And so we'll be bringing that back at your next legislative meeting, two weeks from tonight.
Okay, thank you. Items on the consent agenda are those of routine or housekeeping in nature, those items, which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any comments or questions on any items on the consent agenda? I will say there was about eight public comments on item D, which was the extending the face mask ordinance requirements. Any comments from the city commission about any of the general consent agenda items? Seeing none, are there any public comments? Okay. With that, I'll close public comment. Would anyone like to make a motion? Please state, sorry, please state your name and... Did you all want to do anything? We're moving forward, okay. Anybody make a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor Lynda Morris, I move that we approve the consent agenda as distributed.
Second.
Thank you. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, except no on item D.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes, except no on item D.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of consent item D, which carries three to two.
Thank you. We have a public hearing. Item is 1,200 block alley between Vetier Street and Kearney Street, ST 2005, SW 2004. And the presenter is Rob Otte, Director of Public Works.
You got a pincher tonight.
There you go. How are you doing, Brian?
Yep, I'm good. Are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Tonight's item is a public hearing to determine the advisability of a benefit district for the alley that's in the 1,200 block between Vetier and Kearney. This is the second alley to be reviewed by the commissioners since the adoption of the alley paving policy in 2017. The first alley that was completed and deemed advisable was constructed in 2018, and it was in the 1,100 block between Bertrand and Raton. So with that, we'll get started on the PowerPoint. First, I want to talk a little bit about the alley paving policy, which was passed in 2017. It was passed in response to the Infro and UCR district. And the commission gave us guidance at that time that routinely, they wanted us to methodically go through the UCR and through the Infro district, pave the alleys that were gravelled or were broken up concrete, because those alleys serve a different function now. When they were originally created back in the 1930s, 1940s, when they were single-family homes, they carried Model Ts, Model As, maybe 10, 15 vehicles a day. Today, there can easily be 300 to 400 vehicles a day, because there's several hundred apartment units onto those alleys where kids, college kids, park and then drive up and down the alley. They're also carrying a lot of garbage trucks, those heavy trucks that set in the alleys and go through the alley and then pick up the trash on the backside of the buildings now. So the goal of the alley paving policy was to pave or repave existing alleys to meet the demands of the additional increased loads, traffic loads, in the Infro district. In 2018, all the alleys in the Infro district were rated. This alley was actually in the bottom three of those that were rated. The other two, one of them has been completed, another one will be back before you next year. This one actually jumped up a rating because there's so much construction on it. M1 and M2 apartments, as you've seen along Manhattan, have gotten substantially bigger and jumped this one in front of the other. So due to the significant increase that's expected when those M1 and M2 apartments become available, this alley now has jumped ahead. So what is the alley paving policy? Well, the policy requires four items. First, it must be in the Infro district. This one is not only in the Infro district, it's also in the UCR district, which is the heavy use, the large apartment building district. The alley must have more than 32 living units adjacent to it. This one actually has more than 100. We didn't count them, but just the M1, M2 alone is over 100. There's probably close to 200 on this one. Public meetings with the adjacent owners must be held, and this is the one where we had some complications due to COVID. We mailed one set of letters. We asked for some responses, opportunity to set up some Zoom meetings. We did hear back from almost everybody in the alley. We either talked to them or their representative. After that first round, we mailed out another round of letters just to make sure everybody got their comments heard. We did hear back from some more people then. Really, the discussion hinged on, nobody disagrees with the condition of the alley. The alley is in poor condition. The discussion is, we think that the city should pay for all of it. Unfortunately, that's not what the policy says, so I can't make that recommendation to you. It has to go through the public hearing process. So what is the district? Well, with a public hearing district, the district is set by the area method of assessment. So the bigger your lot is, the more you're going to pay, which is actually kind of advantageous in this case, because the two largest apartment buildings are going to end up paying for half. Half of the total alley are in the two new apartments. The other seven or eight lots are going to divide that other half. So there's no single-family properties on this alley. They're all rentals. And while we're doing some alley work, we're also going to do some stormwater improvements, like we did in the last alley in the 1,100 block. Because those alleys now not only function as the main transportation and traffic way, they also carry a vast majority of the stormwater. Almost all of these buildings shed water to that alley. That alley carries that water to 11th Street into North Manhattan, and then it runs down the gutter, eventually gets into an inlet. We're going to capture that water early, and we're going to get it underground early. And so there's actually a stormwater component to this one also. So what did this alley look like? Well, 2013 pictures here, you can tell it's not in real great shape. You can see the longitudinal cracks, the cracks, the broken curbs. Here's another 2013 picture. You can see it's pretty severely deteriorated at that point. Again, this is seven years ago, so it's not better today, for sure. 2019, here's a picture from 2019. You can see the potholes that are in it, the, again, the stormwater that collects in the alley and just doesn't go away. This water eventually gets down to the subgrade and just deteriorates that subgrade. It's garbage trucks come through it, then they beat it up and pound on it. 2019, this is what it looks like today. You can see the M1, M2 apartments in the background. Here's what the alley looks like today. So again, I don't think there's a lot of discussion or a lot of opposition to the condition of the alley. The question is, who should pay for it? Again, here's that condition of that alley here and here. This would be looking east, this would be looking west. So what is the proposed district? Well, the M1 and M2 apartments, this is M2. This is M1. These two would actually pay for half of the cost. So these two are paying for half, and the other one, two, three, four, five, six are dividing 50%. So the M1, M2 estimated payments, M1, this one, about $178 a month. I believe there's about 30 or 40 apartment buildings in there, so you're talking about $3 to $4 per apartment per month. M2 is 297 a month, this one. I don't know the count on how many apartments are in there. All I know is it's huge. And so when you divide a large number, you know, by that 300 or 297, you're probably in that $5 to $6 a month per bedroom again. So the Wayne Family Trust, and I did hear from the Wayne Family's attorney, we played a little bit of voicemail, voice tag, I talked to them twice. I never did get an opportunity to speak with their attorney directly. We just never touched base, but we did converse a little bit back and forth. And their concerns were the same as everybody else, that, you know, we don't disagree with the condition, we just don't think that property owners should pay for it. So the Wayne Family Trust has these four lots here. You're looking at roughly $60 a month for the two smaller lots, $120 a month for the two bigger lots. So again, these seven are dividing 50%, while these two are picking up the other 50%. The Brooks here on the corner, I did speak with them, very nice folks. They are looking at about $60 a month for this, I believe it's a fourplex here in this corner. And then this, actually, this is a Sabota's, excuse me, that's incorrect. This is the Sabota's. I did speak with them also. Again, about $60 a month for that smaller lot, smaller parcel. So what are the next steps? Well, by conducting the public hearing now, we could time the construction to be in the summer of 2021. That's why we're here before you tonight. We obviously would have preferred to have these public hearings with the neighbors outside of COVID, so that we could actually have a really robust conversation. Unfortunately, if I want to get this alley done in 2021, I need to get going down the design path. I need to get to bid in about February or March, so that I can construct that alley in the summer. If I don't do that now, I'm going to be in the summer of 2021. So there's going to be a year of M1, M2, all of these apartments open, several hundred students driving up and down these daily, where we're going to have to maintain it the best we can. And alleys are quite maintenance-intensive. We put quite a bit of resources, time, material with rock and gravel, equipment, bulldozers, blades, road bladers, that sort of stuff. So we would prefer to get this going in 2021, because we don't want to be in a situation where we have several hundred students going up and down these alleys. We'll see what the commission, what the direction we get tonight is. So if the commission finds it advisable, we're going to go to a consultant that designed M1 and M2 apartments. We're going to ask them for a scope and fee. They've already got all the survey, they've got all the stormwater already figured out. We're going to come back to you with a scope and fee for that. Because of the timeframe, the intensity of getting that design done, we don't think we can do it internally, so we're going to ask a consultant to do that. They also already have quite a bit of the data that we'd have to go out and capture. So if the commission does decide to move forward, we'll be back probably in two weeks, possibly four, with a scope and fee from a design firm to get started on design. The goal would be to bid in February or March and construct over the summer. And with that, I'll stand for questions or open up the floor.
Thank you, Brian. I think alleys, we've been talking about those for several years, and we know how, what a terrible shape they've been in, and we've heard from community members as well as students and families regarding the alleys.
Yeah, it's an ongoing problem.
Yeah.
And I think we have a pretty good policy in place that the commission passed in 2017.
Yeah, I appreciate your work on this. Are there any questions or comments for Brian?
Commissioner Hassel, is it a 15-year payout? Is that what my math would tell me on the estimated annual payment versus the assessment? Is anybody?
Should be 20 years. Should be 20, because it's a geo bond to a benefit district.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no more comments from here, it is a public hearing. So the public hearing period is now open. The public was allowed to submit public comments related to this item through the city's website or by emailing or calling the city commissioners directly until 4:00 PM today. There were no public comments received. This comment is published on the, sorry, this comment is published on the city's website and was provided to each commissioner. The public comment part of the written part of this record is of the hearing. In-person comments, are there any in-person comments? And if there are, please come on up and state your name and address and speak to this item. Seeing no, sorry, yes, come on up. Oh, come on up, come to the speaker and say your name and address and...
Okay, my name is Louis Schwaboda, and I own, me and my wife own the property at 1201 Kearney. And I don't even think we'd be having this talk tonight if it wouldn't be for all those big buildings going in up there. The main reason you're doing this, or you want to do this, is because you have to have a bigger storm sewer going through there. And I just don't, I don't feel like I should have to pay for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Jenny Schwaboda, Lou's wife. We are shocked because we've had a lot going on in our life, and we just realized at tonight's meeting that this is an annual request. We were actually having a hard time financially swallowing the 700 and, I forget, $15 annually, thinking that that was a one-time thing. We had no idea that it was for so many years. So yes, we're just shocked at the price that we, as a, you know, I mean, we've got one rental is what we have, and what we're now expected to be paying. So very against this, and we really appreciate you listening to us.
Thank you. So Brian, for them, is it the 715?
Yeah, let me actually pull up which property is theirs. They are this one right here. This is, this should be Sabota. They are this property here, is that correct? Yeah, yep. They're this one right here.
Brian, you might talk, I'm sorry, Rob Otte, Director of Public Works. Brian, you might talk a little bit about how the petition is structured in terms of what the benefit district is paying for and what the city-at-large stormwater
Sure.
...fund is going to pay for.
Sure, so the benefit district at large pays for the concrete that's in the alley from North Manhattan to 12th Street. That's 16 feet of concrete. The storm sewer system, all of the storm sewer system will be paid for through the stormwater fund. So everything, all the pipe, inlets, boxes, all of that's in the stormwater fund. The benefit district actually only pays for the concrete.
And what I'm looking at, Commissioners, I'm sorry, Rob Otte, Director of Public Works, what I'm looking at is page five of your packet. When you look at appropriations of costs, the benefit district is paying for 56.54% and then the city-at-large is paying for 43.56%. So we've split out the stormwater costs. We did the exact same thing when we did, when Brian introduced this item. On the previous alley, the city-at-large, the stormwater program picked up the cost of the storm sewer system on that previous alley. So we're recommending and trying to practice the same things that we did previously. Commissioner Hassel, you had a question?
Commissioner Hassel, my question is, so the city's 46, 43.56% is strictly the stormwater stuff. The city's not paying for any of the alley paving as such. We're fixing the underground stuff. So to make some kind of a parallelism, if somebody's sidewalk in front of their place craps out and needs to be replaced, who's responsible for that?
The adjoining property owner.
So I guess the consistent city position would be, if the sidewalk is bad, you have to, the homeowner has to fix it. If the alley is bad, the adjacent homeowner has to fix it, I guess, because it's, the city doesn't, other than, once we get the stuff underground, storm sewer underground, the city has no real use for the alley as far as public, there's no public benefit of the alley for the city.
Yeah, it's not a local roadway. It's specifically for those adjacent property owners to use. It's their use, I understand, yeah.
Okay, so.
Commissioner Rob Otte, Director of Public Works, the only thing I would add is in the alleys, sanitary sewer is the only thing that is in those alleys. Everything else is private utilities. But even our access, our manholes are actually typically in the streets where the manhole lives, because each block is about 400 feet, which is right around our max length by KDHE and just even by our own standards. So I just want to be, just want to be upfront. We do have sanitary sewer in the alleys, but the rest is access to those properties and then private utilities such as AT&amp;T, Kansas Gas, Evergy, and so on and so forth.
Did you have something?
After the public hearing, I don't know if others want to speak.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was any more speakers to the public hearing. I do appreciate you coming this evening and speaking to us. I think this is one of those items that's been an ongoing issue for us for at least the time that I've been on the city commission. With that, I'm going to close public hearing and open that up for city commission comments and questions.
Lynda Morris, I would just like to say that I have supported the idea of improving the alleys in the older part of town here that are still gravel or no gravel, and you dive up and down as you go through them. It's time that we address them. But I also know, if you were to have built a house in the suburbs, you would be paying for all of those utilities, the street, the sewer, the water, all of them. And that is a heavy burden out there, too. When you choose to build in an established area, all of the utilities are in place. You don't have that expense. And I don't believe anybody has ever paid for the alley. They have paid for Anderson Avenue and for all of them, the paved streets, but these are unpaved alley. And all we have ever done, had to do, or have ever done with a minimal kind of attitude is put gravel on it and grade it occasionally. But now we have a big change, and that is all of the density in this particular, everything's documented. This is not a good situation. I have advocated in the past that when a developer comes and wants to put in a big complex, that part of that deal should be that they pay for the alley upgrade. And I still advocate for that. It should not be on the city taxpayers to pay for, to improve one piece, one alley, as far as I'm concerned. When there's a direct benefit, and you can say, I mean, I'm sorry, you can say you don't use it, and maybe you don't, because you have, you're on the, on the street, probably don't. But these apartment complex owners are taking full advantage of every inch to build, and they're not, they're actually refusing to contribute to pay for the alley in the beginning when they're constructing the building. And so we're having to take this kind of a step afterwards, and in this case, some of those are still being built, so that's a good thing, that it won't be torn up after all the people get moved in. But it's acceptable to me that these are causing distress on, and are causing our need to pave it, and certainly for the future residents who will be living there. I can justify it, and I know having one smaller house feels punished doing it, but it is the whole that we have to look at. And so I support the alley paving. And I think one a year is something that the city has said, we can afford to do that in, with all the staff time and all the notices to the residents and legal kinds of considerations. So that's what we've undertaken. We did, we're trying to do one a year. So, you know, the other areas, the other alley residents will know we're coming someday if their alley is in really bad shape. So I, I'm sorry for your burden, but I just think it needs to be done.
Other comments, questions? I think Commissioner Morris summarized it very well. I think these are such high-density areas, and the cars that are going back and forth on them, and there's lots of students that are in those alleys all the time, and it's just becoming very dangerous over the number of years. And they're in really, really bad shape, and just trying to get to them, I don't even know how many we can get to, but it is quite costly. With that, is there a motion to move forward with this item?
Mayor, I move that we, assuming, let's see, yes. I move that we approve resolution, resolution, Lynda Morris. I move that we approve resolution number 090120-A, making findings and establishing the parameters of the project as set in the notice, deeming the project advisable and authorizing construction of the improvements in the 1,200-block alley located between Vetier and Kearney Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Here we are, going to move on to the general agenda. First one up is the Interlaken Villas planned unit development. Presenter is Chad Bunter this evening, our Assistant Director of Community Development. Chad?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Pleasure to be back in front of you in person, presenting an item. This is a P E D amendment to the Interlaken addition. You heard its sister proposal, I guess you would say, a few meetings ago. We're in the extreme northwest corner of the city. As I mentioned, you viewed... As I mentioned, you viewed or reviewed the proposal to the north of Colbert Hills Drive. Tonight is for the south side of Colbert Hills Drive and along Palmer Circle. Kind of, this area has had a bit of history in terms of proposed developments that haven't quite gotten off the ground. This was the original Interlaken Villas residential PUD. And then, as I mentioned, the Solhimes residential development to the north of Colbert Hills, two multifamily condo units or multifamily residential units. And then tonight is the Colbert Hills, Colbert Hills Senior Care. It's a PUD amendment being presented to you as a final development plan. What you see here are four separate buildings consisting, I believe, of 12 Home Care Plus units. I only know just enough about the Home Care Plus model, but is a, is a, a type of service for senior living licensed by the state of Kansas to provide smaller residential care for, for those in need, similar to a nursing home, but on a smaller scale. So four 12-bedroom units, all single-family or single-bedroom units with common space. And then you can see the three curb cuts with their parking spaces throughout the site. Home Care Plus is a fairly new model. As I mentioned, I'm not the expert, but it provides that smaller living and this is some of the excerpts from the state statute that licenses it. Uh, let's see here. Kind of a view or a rendering of the proposed homes, that, the buildings that will be constructed there. As I mentioned, each would be 12 one-bedroom units, have onsite care and amenities for them and I believe the applicant will be on, so I'll let them elaborate more on that. During our public hearing with the planning board that was held two weeks ago, the neighbors did voice support generally of the concept, but had some concerns about the site plan. Let me see, skip through these. Specifically, this western corner here along Palmer Circle, they were concerned about the screening of the parking lot and voiced concern of the location of the trash dumpster that will be in this, in this corner. The planning board made a motion to ask the consultant and the applicant to review the landscape plan to provide more screening of the parking lot and that the planning board wanted to review the plan and approve it before it came to you, which they did at their last meeting. And so this is the revised plan. They altered the parking lot slightly compared to the originally submitted one and provided more screening. Let's see, drainage basically flows to the south-southeast towards Little Kitten. This area, as you know, or I would assume you know, is, has been over-detained with that large regional basin at Vanessa Drive. And so generally the, the site, because of that oversizing of the pond, the site will flow to Vanessa Drive and drain out. There are, I believe, a bioswold captures some sediments and cleaned the water, but generally that's the drainage plan is my understanding. And then the circulation's fairly simple. Curb cut, three curb cuts on the Colbert Hills, off-street parking spaces serving the, the various buildings. There are limited sidewalk connection between them, but they will generally, because of the steep grade, if you bend up Colbert Hills Drive, will fairly be independent. There isn't, because of the grade, grade pedestrian access, although they do have a number of sidewalks throughout. As you know, the area, it is a growing neighborhood with single-family residential surrounding the outer edge of Colbert Hills and then this inner edge was intended to be a higher-density development of some sort. Currently, they're both zoned PUD. In the past, they were zoned R3 multifamily. And then the comprehensive plan shows it for low to medium density, although the, I think I have a image here, maybe I don't. The Colbert Hills plan did show it as generally some higher townhome uses, I do believe. So that's it on the PUD. There is a final plat associated with this, basically creating, it's one lot today, it will remain one lot, and it just reestablishes front property lines and any other cleaning abaisements that are needed for the plat. So that is my summary of the staff report. City administration recommends approval of the PUD amendment in the form of final development plan with 13 conditions. The planning board reviewed this and also recommends approval. They added a 14th condition related to that revised landscape plan, which they heard and saw at their last meeting in August and approved that. So they bring forward to you a recommendation of approval for the PUD amendment. So happy to answer any questions you may have about the item.
Thank you, Chad. Other questions for Chad or comments?
I was just noting, was this the, we received a public comment late on, or am I thinking? Okay.
Brenda, do you have any?
No. No, I don't, but I didn't see the comment. Is it, somebody going to read it or?
I did see it. I don't think I printed it off.
Had to do with the positioning of the, the trash container?
Do we, can we read it out loud? I don't know if anybody has the actual.
Have you seen it, Chad?
I reviewed it at my computer. I can't say I've memorized it. If I could give a summary, maybe?
Yes, that would be great.
So the gentleman that provided the public comment was also at the planning board and raised the, the concerns about the dumpster location as well as the screening. See if I can find that site plan where that dumpster will be located. Although the dumpster will be located at this location here, although the gentleman raised the concern at the public hearing with the planning board, the planning board only asked the consultant to screen the land, the, the parking area with more landscaping. And they did that as well as reposition the, the configuration of that parking lot a little bit, moved it further toward, or closer to Colbert Hills, but they did not move the location of that dumpster. I'll let the applicant or the consultant team address why they think the location of the dumpster is, is maybe appropriate, it's not the right word, but why they did not move that dumpster and left it where it is and discuss its design. I believe they're on the Zoom link. So that is what I know of it and my brief summary of that public comment.
Thank you, Chad.
And I should say that the reason for that concern is because of its proximity to their house that's right across the street and the noise and, and things, smells that come with dumpsters if they're not maintained properly.
And where is the access to the site?
It'll be right here off of Colbert Hills and that trash.
So it'll be a direct entry into, okay.
I did watch the, sorry, I did watch the planning board meeting from August 3rd and good questions, but it seems as though most of them and as well as myself are not as familiar with the, with the term home, what is it, home care?
Home Care Plus, yeah.
Yeah, home care plus. So it's just for an individual, not a couple or anybody, but an individual senior who is in, in the residence and usually, can you explain that a little bit more for me?
I will try my best. Hopefully the consultant or the developer is on the, on the call and can speak more to it. As I understand it, they're, they're single-bedroom units and they are to provide an assisted living kind of care and maybe even transitional. The, the developer, the owner of the complex, did say that they're designed as single-family units and they have a bunch of amenities for the residents, but they apparently are designed in such a way that if a couple would like to reside there, they can renovate the interior space some way, somehow, to allow for a couple to live there, be it, you know, take down walls or redesign the space or however that may be. But they're intended to be smaller resident units for, for elderly care.
Commissioner Hassel here. Is, is the developer the same one who's got the, the places at 24 and Flush Road? Because the design looks, of the building, looks a whole lot like the, the buildings that are out there, which are some kind of a senior living thing. Do you know if that's, is that a total separate company or separate outfit or is it more of that?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
You'll have to ask that.
So is the developer on, on a Zoom meeting with us this evening?
Well, let's see. I would assume I need to see if I can operate it. There we go. It's been a bit. Let's see. I'll start with TJ because I know him and I'm not a hundred percent of who the other ones are, so I'm going to start the video. You have it set up differently than I have with the planning boards. TJ, if you could turn on your video, please, and I'll unmute you. There we go.
Hi TJ, would you like to add some more to this conversation this evening?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I don't want to get too much into the weeds with the model because I am not the end user here. We happen to own the land right now and we're selling it to a group out of Wichita called Foundation Properties. I can tell you it is not the same group that owns the, the buildings off of 24. It is a different group. The home, the home plus model is really designed as kind of a stepping stone, really before an individual needs full-time, round-the-clock care. These buildings are designed to have in, individual units on the outskirts with centralized kitchen and there will be minimal nursing staff on hand at all times to help the residents. Once again, I'm hoping one of the representatives from the group is on because they can speak more to the details as far as what the business model is there better than I can. I will speak on the dumpster issue real briefly. The, the design there is for access for the trash trucks. We have some easement difficulties at the top part of that site and really the only way to access it is to put the dumpster in that location. It creates a much easier in and out access for the trucks to get in there and then get out. And we couldn't, we looked at moving it to some other locations and just based on how they would have to turn their vehicles, we just couldn't really find a workable solution there. I do know the group is working very diligently to make sure that they are, that the enclosures are built nice and it is properly screened with landscaping as they want to make sure that they're being good neighbors to everybody else that's living in the area.
Thanks TJ. One of the things that I heard on the planning board was, or maybe even in the documents, that only small trucks can go in to deliver. So is it very confined? Is that what it is? And how does a truck know if, I don't know, I don't know what a small truck is. What, what does that mean?
Yeah, I, once again, I, I don't know that I can speak to that. The, the parking lots themselves are not very big lots and the, you know, the biggest truck that's going to be in there is going to be the, the trash collection vehicle. And in order to access it seamlessly, that was the best location on that particular site to, to get to it.
Any questions for TJ before he asks?
It looks like, it looks like Chris Ray may be connecting here. He is from Foundation Properties and I think he would be able to speak better to some of your questions. Chad, I'm not sure how you give him access to be able to speak, but he may be able to answer those questions much better than I can.
Yes, please.
All right. Let me see if I can make this happen. There you go, Chris. I think you are unmuted, so should be good.
I'll have to start his video too, probably. I don't know what he said.
Try again, Chris. You were breaking up a little bit.
Chris?
Chris, you're on mute. I don't know if you're trying to talk. There you are.
Can you hear us?
I think you're on mute still. I'll go unmute you. Go ahead and try it now, Chris. We unmuted you.
Well, if you're looking for Chris Clever, I'm actually here for another project.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Now, the video there too?
TJ, I think he may have left. I don't know if you want to make any more comments or we can wait for him to come back on.
Okay, there's TJ.
Yeah, he's, he's texting me. He's just having a hard time getting on. Looks like he's down there. It's C-Ray iPhone is what it's connected to here. So if you can, if you can unmute him somehow, I think that would work okay.
I believe I'm on board, everybody.
There you go.
Hello, who are we speaking to?
So as for the home plus model, are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, the home plus model is actually a residential model for senior living. It is licensed to take care of 12 individuals. And you can take care of, it's kind of like an assisted living facility all the way up to a, a long-term care community that you would think of as a nursing home. It was designed actually several years ago to remodel residential homes and make them more home-like for seniors. That model started out licensing eight folks, then went to 10, is now it to 12. And the reason is that for the culture change for senior living to make it more home-like experience, these homes are actually designed very similar to your own home that you have, but it has the ability to be able to design specifically for senior care, which in most instances, when you remodel a, a residential house, is very difficult to accomplish. So it's state-of-the-art and it, it is unlike anything that actually is in the state of Kansas with what's going to be provided in technology and design. Any questions?
Did you have a question, Mike?
No, I was just asking about the space. It said deliveries can only be made by a small truck and I wasn't sure how you define a small truck.
I really do apologize. I really hate to have you repeat yourself on that, but let's try one more time with that question. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I think in, in the documents or either
So I think in the documents or either when I was listening to the planning board, somewhere it said that deliveries can only be made by a small truck because there wasn't much space. And I wanted to know your definition of a small truck.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that's a very good question and something that we thought through. Even though you can have large distributors, there are Home Pluses that actually use Hy-Vee to do small deliveries. So you're talking like small van or very small refrigerated vehicles to make those deliveries. It just happens to be more often than you would in a more industrial type or commercial type setting. So understanding that this is a neighborhood and we want it to be a very nice neighborhood with us as partners there, that we will make sure that we have smaller vehicles that are delivering our needs and our essentials unlike a commercial application.
Okay. So can like a UPS truck get there?
So more like a small van-type vehicle.
Okay. Well, I won't, I won't keep talking about the trucks, but I feel, well, the way I, the reason I'm asking is because a lot of people, even during this pandemic, what we see is a lot of people having things delivered to their homes regardless of their ability to drive or not drive. There's more deliveries being made and the size of the truck is never something I've really looked at until we're talking about seniors that are, that are going to, may not have access to go out of their homes and may have more things delivered to them. And that's why I was kind of trying to nail that down, what that looks like.
We will provide everything for them. There's no necessary need to go out and get anything specifically when it comes to physical need, whether that be food or any type of nursing care supply. That will all be delivered and taken care of internally.
Thank you. Other questions?
Commissioner Hassel here. My only concern is that, is that big grade change. The pictures show everything's on a nice kind of a flat surface, but there's got to be 10 to 15 feet drop down from one unit, one set of buildings down to the next one, down to the next one. That's, you think that that's going to work out fine for what you want to do?
Well, that's a, that also is a very good question. Obviously, that site is very unique. That's why it's been a very difficult piece of property to move. The unique thing about Home Plus is you don't want to look at this necessarily as a campus. It's sustainable to each individual unit. So it has each individual unit staffing as well as the residents there. So it's not necessarily designed to be like a large campus which you would traverse resident-wise. Each one of the communities there has its own very large, beautiful patio overlooking the sites in that area as well as the ability for, you know, the community to have the residents and clients also leave the property to go for different outings as well. But the campus itself, because of the grade issue, is not necessarily designed to go in between each building. However, being in the senior care business for over 20 years, we personalize the care and if somebody is in one specific household and they've got a friend or another, we've got shuttle services that'll be able to take care of that for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. The public, we had one comment on this agenda item. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7500, amending ordinances number 7219 and 7342 of the Interlock and Addition Residential Plan Unit Development for the Colbert Hills Senior Center Final Development Plan, generally located at Colbert Hills Drive in Palmer Circle for the Colbert Hills Senior Center Home Plus Community, based on the findings in the staff report and the recommendation of Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Commissioner Butler, I second.
Thank you. Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor, this is Linda Morris. I do want to make a comment. I think that this is a relatively new model for senior living. I've seen them in Topeka and here now, over the last five years or so, ever since the K-Dads and Medicare set up this model for smaller group living rather than huge, long hallways in nursing homes. And it's more personalized. So, and it adds living units for senior citizens in our community and that is sorely needed. So I do support this.
Thank you. With that, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook.
Yes.
Mayor Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And we do A2 now, right? Okay. A2 final plat for the Interlock and Addition 4. Again, Chad Bunter is our Assistant Director for Community Development will be presenting. Chad, just, Chad?
Yeah, he kind of combined those presentations, right? So we can.
We can just go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept the easements and rights away as shown on final plat of Interlatch in Addition 4, generally located at Colbert Hills Drive in Palmer Circle, based conformance with the Manhattan Urban Area Subdivision Regulations.
Was there any comments on this particular? Was there any comments on this particular part of it? I know we had combined them, but we didn't vote in a combined manner. Okay, seeing none. There was one via email. There was a motion and there was a second. What?
That was the trash one, not the easement.
That was not the easement.
The wonderful.
Okay, that's right. Okay, we are back to making a motion and second. If there are no other comments, Brenda, please call the roll.
I did not catch who made the second.
Commissioner Butler.
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook.
Yes.
Mayor Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The last agenda item for this evening is the Expedition Asia Exhibit Construction Project, And the presenters this evening are Eddie Estes, Director of Park and Recreation, and Scott Schumaker, our Zoo Director. Oh, I'm sorry. That was C. We still have one more item after this for anybody getting too excited that we're done. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Scott Schumaker, Zoo Director. I'm here tonight to talk about the long-awaited Expedition Asia project at Sunset Zoo. It's a project that's been many years in the making, but I think it's been worth the So just as a quick overview, this is a rendering of the project and it basically consists of a new tiger exhibit, a new sloth bear exhibit, and a new Amur leopard exhibit. It also includes an elevated overlook pavilion that will look over all three exhibits and then also includes an ADA walkway. So if you're familiar with the zoo, the lower tier of Sunset Zoo is not ADA accessible. This project will make that tier accessible and at that point Sunset Zoo will be 100% ADA accessible. And so we're very excited about that. So these are a couple renderings of the project. You can see on the left, it's just some viewing areas that would exist in the new project. The picture on the right's interesting in that if you notice the stone columns, those are part of the original WPA project that built Sunset Zoo. And so those columns are 1930s. And so the architect worked very hard to incorporate those into the new structures. And so we're excited about that. We actually took this to the Historical Preservation Alliance and they vetted and approved it. So we'll be retaining some of the components from the old exhibits that were there. Just as background, in 2015, Sunset Zoo received a major gift of $500,000. And working with the donor, we tried to identify projects of interest to him and of need to the zoo. And that's when we identified these three new Asian exhibits, the tiger, sloth bear, and leopard exhibits, also including the walkway and the elevated overlook. All three species are highly endangered in the wild, so these exhibits will have great conservation value. The Amur leopards, last survey, there are about 40 left in the wild. So those are species that need a lot of work. Working with the donor, GLMV Architecture was hired to design the project and establish an estimated cost for fundraising purposes. Upon completion of that design, the estimated cost was $3.2 million for the entire project. 2017, the City Commission approved the use of the excess sales tax from the 2006 Quality of Life Sales Tax to be used by the zoo. And so that's become a major funding mechanism for this project. The Zoo Trust, which we have some representatives here tonight, began a fundraising campaign and they raised about $1.9 million by the summer of 2019 for this project. 2019, we started actually putting this project out on the street. So we started a qualification-based selection process for construction firms. We basically interviewed four companies that had prior zoo experience, zoo construction experience. They submitted proposals. Those four firms actually met with a selection committee here and went through an interview process. Selection committee determined that KBS Constructors was the most qualified firm of the four that submitted a proposal. As soon as that process was over, all four firms submitted bids for the project. Some of you may remember, all those bids came in higher, significantly higher than the architect's estimate. But of those four estimates, KBS Constructors was the lowest bid. So on July 16, 2019, the City Commission rejected all bids and then authorized the city administration to work with KBS Constructors to value-engineer this project into the budget that we had. The city and the trust representatives continued to work with KBS over the last year to value-engineer this project and to do so without sacrificing any of the quality of the exhibits or the experience for the guests. So currently, the city has about $2 million in that excess sales tax, Quality of Life Sales Tax Fund dedicated to Expedition Asia. Sunset Zoological Park and Wildlife Conservation Trust went out and raised additional funds since 2019 and they are now committing a little more than $2.2 million to the project for the construction. KBS Constructors has proposed to build Expedition Asia for a guaranteed maximum price of $4,205,667. The total project cost, including contingency funds, construction administration, testing fees, et cetera, is $4,291,186. Total funds raised from sales tax and donations is $4,291,186. So Expedition Asia is the first piece of the new master plan that was passed by the City Commission in 2019. And so we'll be kicking off our new master plan with this project. It will meet or exceed standards for animal care and welfare as established by the United States Department of Agriculture, which is our licensing organization, and the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, which we are an accredited member of. Value engineering process has not compromised the animal care or welfare or the guest experience. We were able to achieve some pretty significant savings through changing materials, changing some of the glass that's in the exhibit, things like that. We believe this is going to have a positive impact on the zoo. It's probably the biggest animal project in the history of the zoo. It'll create state-of-the-art exhibits for these animals and will create a really great guest experience for the zoo. It'll also create some rental opportunities for us, which will be revenue generation. So we always look at those kind of opportunities as well. We are here tonight to ask the City Commission to approve and execute the funding agreement with Sunset Zoological Park and Wildlife Conservation Trust and to accept donated funds in the amount of $2,202,000. Also authorize the city to finalize and the mayor and clerk to execute a construction manager at risk contract and amendment number one with KBS Constructors for a guaranteed maximum price of $4,205,667. Also authorize the city to finalize and the mayor and clerk to execute a construction agreement, construction administration contract with GLMV Architecture, and then to approve resolution number 090120-C, authorizing the issuance of temporary notes for Expedition At that point, I will stand for questions. We do have Joel Chris from KBS Constructors here and then Chris Cleaver is on Zoom for GLMV Architecture.
Thank you, Scott. I think there weren't any comments via email to Commissioners, but we do have about five or six speakers this evening that would like to make comments regarding this item. So if there are questions, we'll take those first.
So what, Commissioner Hassel here, what, what do you, you're just going to be, you said rental stuff. Is it going to be like renting this outside walking space? There's no, there's no building or pavilion included with this?
Well, the pavilion is an overlooked pavilion and that'll have, I think that'll have some pretty good rental opportunities. That pavilion or that overlooked pavilion is an elevated deck that will overlook all three exhibits. And so it seats about 180 people.
Is it open-air?
It is open-air. I think it's going to be a great venue for like wedding receptions, parties, family reunions. It'll also facilitate zoo events like our Wine in the Wild and Bird the Zoo event and our Spectacular event. So it's going to have lots of uses.
Okay. I didn't see any pictures of anything that I could tell was a pavilion, so that's fine.
If you, yeah, I don't know how to make this thing go backwards.
Since I'm kind of a Johnny come lately on this thing since it's been going on so long.
Yeah.
So right here is the overlooked pavilion.
Okay.
So you've got a tiger holding building, sloth bear holding, leopard holding, and then this overlooked pavilion will actually look into the tiger yard, the sloth bear yard, and then the leopard yard. So you could rent that pavilion after hours, have your reception, whatever, and all three of those exhibits will have animals in them. You'll have the opportunity to watch all of those while you're having your event.
Scott, Linda Morris. Last time, it's been a while since I saw the plan.
Yes.
And I read in the materials that you've cut over or negotiated over $800,000 reduction called value engineering.
Correct.
I'm wondering, what did you sacrifice?
So a couple of the big-ticket items was utilities.
Okay.
We, the original bid, and KBS may want to speak to this, had a sub that did utilities. They, after this, we got into this value engineering process, they had Larson Construction come out and look at it. And they came in with a significantly lower price to do utilities to the site. So that was a big savings. Another huge savings was the glass viewing in all of those exhibits. Originally, it called for 10-foot panels of glass, I believe. We reduced those down to six-and-a-half-feet panels and we saved over $250,000 just in doing that. And that'll have no impact on the viewing, you know, opportunities in the exhibit. It just reduces the amount of glass that's out there. Those two things created a lot of savings. Those two things created a lot of savings. And then we, you know, we just nickled and dimed a lot. All of that, the brown stuff you see there is a decking material, including the overlooked pavilion. Originally called for a product called E-Pay. It's got a long lifespan, but it's very expensive. We swapped it out for a composite material, which is a lot cheaper, has a pretty long lifespan as well. That saved a lot of money as well. And then, you know, we just found places where we could cut different things. We changed the landscaping. We went to a smaller size plant where it called for like a five gallon, we go to a three gallon plant, saved money.
And is the entrance at the bottom of this picture still?
The entrance will come in, the main entry is right here. So if you're familiar with the zoo, this is the concession stand, and this is Chautauqua, the amphitheater. You're going to come in this way. There'll be some viewing here for tigers, and then you come through these two buildings, and then here, and then you've got these both sloth bear tiger exhibits open up to you. Then you can come on down the walkway, and you can either go into the pavilion or continue on down. And you have the leopard exhibit here. You come back down this ADA walkway, and then this is a viewing area for the leopard exhibit as well. So for the leopards, for example, you're going to have viewing from this end and this end and along the walkway. Tiger sloth bears, you're going to have viewing all along these sides of the exhibits plus down the middle. So it's going to be tons of viewing opportunities, I think, for people.
I'm just having trouble, because this is a kind of a slice or a special little view. Where is, I know that you were planning a new entrance on the east side into the zoo. Are you still planning to come in the same way up top?
Yes, you will still come in, I guess I'm not following.
Well, I think you were doing something to, with regard to a better ADA access for people.
Well, yeah, and that's this piece here. So when you come in here through these two buildings, then you enter, you enter into this ADA walkway. And so if you're familiar with the zoo, this is a hillside.
That's steep.
So you come in this walkway, and it's a slow grade down, all the way down. And then down here at the bottom, you hit these switchbacks to maintain that grade for ADA accessibility. So that changes the entryway a little bit into how you experience what we call the lower tier of Asia. But this is, this is the entryway, and that does change. The old entryway is over here. You'd come down, you'd come down this way, sidewalk and down a bunch of steps, and then around. So it does change this, if that makes sense.
Thanks. I'm not going to belabor it, I just was trying to put this in perspective. Thank you.
So if you're, yeah, if you're familiar with the zoo, this is the pavilion up here, the big open air pavilion, and the restrooms. And then, so it is a new, it is all new developed. Right now, that's just grass.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Enthusiastic about it, that's great.
Thank you, Scott. I think I will open up for public comment, since we do have several people that have worked on this for years now. I do have a list of them. So let me call up Melissa Kirkwood. Melissa, did you want to say a few words? State your name and address, I don't know, yeah.
Hi, thanks, Mayor. I am Melissa Kirkwood. I'm 2805 Liquid Drive is my personal.
And just speak into it maybe.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Kirkwood. My address is 2805 Liquid Drive. I am the Development Officer for Sunset Zoo. And I just want to thank everybody, including the trust board, our friends at Sunset Zoo, and our staff for diligently working on this project. It has been years in the making, and we are very fortunate to have such dedicated volunteers to help make this happen. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Melissa. Our next we have Steve Spade. Steve here? Is there a Steve in the hallway? Good evening.
Actually, I apologize, I believe I signed along the sheet coming in.
It said for the zoo.
No, I did not have any comments. I'm here just representing KBS.
Okay.
And we appreciate the opportunity and the consideration and the work done by the foundation for this project.
We're glad you're here this evening, thank you. Larry Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Larry Fox. I am the Treasurer of the Sunset Zoological Park, Conservation and Wildlife Trust Foundation. I have been in that position for the last 10 years. Prior to 2017, my job was very easy. Then we took on this project and it became very complicated. As Scott said, this started back in 2015 with Chuck's very generous gift to get this rolling. The project kind of languished for a couple of years until 2017, when the city commission made the decision to allow the tax money to be used for this project, which was a great start. At that time, the foundation took on a fundraising drive. We had a couple of early, very significant gifts. And then the FOS, the Friends of Sunset Zoo, agreed to contribute $250,000 towards the project. Our foundation agreed to contribute the same for a period of time. And so we took on then a campaign to raise, at that point, a million dollars. And we were successful in doing that up to 2019. And then when we got the bad news of the excessive cost, we went to work trying to reduce the cost, working with the city and the contractor, and we were able to raise a little more money. So as of right now, we have total commitments that we've raised of $2,272,000. And of that, which is the good news, is we've collected a million 875 of that. So we're setting at 82.5%. So to make, you know, you all comfortable with the private support for this project, we feel like, you know, we have good commitment to the FOS, still owes about $100,000. Our trust, we need to raise about $84,000. But of our million-dollar campaign, we only have $213,000 outstanding. That's from 11 either families or foundations. All of those, we feel very comfortable that we'll collect those. And if not, our zoo trust, as of June, had total assets of just under half a million dollars. So we certainly don't want to ever have to do that, but we could stand by, back up those commitments. Just want you to be aware of that. Just a little bit about our donor base. We had, we kind of drew the line at $2,500 whether a gift was, you know, smaller or larger. The under $2,500 gifts, we had roughly 250 individuals commit to that. Of the $2,500 or greater, we had 47 families or foundations contribute to that. We had 18 gifts of $25,000 or more, and we had six gifts of $100,000 or more. So we have some folks that have made some very significant contributions towards this project. We really want to see it happen. So we were very happy working with the city to get our agreement finalized. We feel comfortable with it, and we hope you will too.
Thank you. Those are extraordinary numbers. Thank you. And we have, Scott already did, Jack Chang? Oh, okay, I said listen only. Rick and Beth Fulton. Whoever wants to go first, thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Fulton, and I am currently President of the Zoo Trust. I just want to thank the city and the commissioners for all their support. We have worked very, very hard, and it has been somewhat of a rocky road. And Larry was correct, his job became exponentially more difficult when we took this on. So we've worked hard to bring this to fruition, and we're very, very excited. I do think it's going to bring a lot of revenue to the city of Manhattan. The zoo is already one of the main attractions, and I, there is no exhibit like this anywhere close. I think this will do wonderful things for the city, and we need that right now. Our revenues are down. So appreciate your support, and just thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Beth. Rick, did you want to add anything more?
I'm just curious.
Okay, thank you. She took care of it for you. Are there any other public comments? Even if you haven't signed on, you still have, this is your time. So if you'd like to make any comments towards this project, please do so. Okay, seeing no more public comments, other questions for Scott or for the, is it the project manager or the developer?
Commissioner Haddasal, I just have one question. Is this leftover money from the pools, that Quality of Life issue thing?
Yes.
The pool, okay. And so, very good, that's all I needed to know.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron.
I'll make a motion.
I just wanted to make a question.
I was going to say, that was the sales tax at Sunset.
Correct, that's correct.
That was 2006, so that's been collected, you know, over the years.
Actually, you retired it early.
Right.
When we went out for the quarter cent renewal for the rec centers and the trails and CECO, we retired that early.
Right. And we dedicated some money to the pool maintenance, I think, at the time, because originally that sales tax was for the zoo and pools. And then we dedicated the other $2 million towards this project. I just want to say a few comments. I, you know, I, we've been talking about this agenda item for a while, and I know the hills and valleys and mountains you had to climb for this. But it just shows the dedication and commitment from our Manhattan residents to dedicate not just the financial commitment to this project, but also your motivation and dedication and the expectation you have for our zoo. And that's what makes Manhattan special, even though we are going through all of these other challenges right now. This is the bright spot of our community. It's people like you and organizations such as yourself, which give us pause and to invest in the future. And I do think we're going to make substantial revenue off of this, and it'll be one of a kind, and I'm certainly looking forward to it moving. And I'm glad we're here tonight to make this decision after a lot, a lot of pains along the way, aches and pains along the way. So hopefully, we will start digging sometime here soon, having a groundbreaking ceremony sometime and see the animals here. So thank you for everybody that's put their time into it from the community as well as our city staff. With that, I'll take a motion.
I want to make one other comment, because I did get some emails on this, and people were concerned, saying, why are we spending $4 million on this? And I just want to make absolutely clear that, you know, that money's not coming out of your property tax or anyplace else. It was a dedicated sales tax in 2006 that raised $2 million. And then you've got to just, you know, give a shout out to the Sunset Zoo folks. I mean, you raised, you know, more than half of the cost of this. And then, you know, when the city commission said, look, we can't kick any other money in there, you went out and reduced the cost of this thing to make it fit within the budget. And so this is about as good as it gets, in my mind, for budgeting, because you got great public support and donations, and you had a dedicated citizen-approved sales tax, and the money is not going to be diverted from its intended purpose. So everybody needs to understand that, and this is going to be a great project.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Linda Morse, I too would like to speak to the, to complement the success of the Friends of the Zoo and the foundation. When I was, after I was first elected, I got a briefing from, I think, the Friends of the Zoo. And it was a wonderful plan and very impressive, and it just seemed like a tall mountain, or at least a hill. And so it's a pleasure to be a part of. Actually, I think it took a commitment on the part of the city and the Friends of the Zoo to hold that money until this day, when we could bring it all together and make it happen. So without, and I'm glad that we've all committed to doing that and keeping it in front of us. You know, sometimes it's wonderful to be a part of creating a kind of a diamond and creating something that is so special. Not in years to come, people will be praising and saying, you know, go to Manhattan, it's like some of the other things we have here. So this is, feels good to be a part of it. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for your fundraising efforts. This is such a significant fundraising effort.
Thank you. And I echo those comments, the trust and the city staff, with all the challenges of this project, never quit. We just kept working through it, and I think it's going to be a dynamite addition to the zoo, to the city, to the community.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Aaron.
All right, the motion. Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to execute a funding agreement with the Sunset Zoological Park and Wildlife Conservation Trust to accept funds raised on behalf of the Sunset Zoo for construction of Exhibition Asia, an award and authorize city administration to finalize, finalize, and the mayor and the city clerk to execute a construction manager at risk contract and amendment number one for guaranteed maximum price of $4,205,667 with KBS Constructors Incorporated of Topeka, Kansas, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute contract amendment number three in the amount not to exceed $57,276 for construction administration services with GLMV Architecture Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, and approve resolution number 090120-C authorizing the issuance of temporary notes for the Exhibition Asia projects, project.
Commissioner Butler, I'll second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Estabrock?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
I vote yes.
Linda Morse.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
There you go, finally.
I was just telling, I was just telling Commissioner Estabrock that I was sure glad he made that motion.
Terrific. Our last agenda item this evening is the Flint Hills Regional Council update and membership services. Jason Hilders, as our deputy city manager, will speak to it, as well as, it says Gina Skrogz, but I don't know, is Gina here? Oh, that's the one you took out.
We'll move to the last item.
Okay, because it just, is Christie speaking? Okay, Christie then. It had her name under the. Yeah.
Good evening, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, Christie.
You are, okay. I have a hard time hearing you all. Okay, great. So, good evening, Mayor and City Commission. My name is Christie Rodriguez, I'm the new executive director of the Flint Hills Regional Council. I apologize that you're seeing me virtually this evening. Unfortunately, we got notice that our youngest daughter had been exposed to COVID-19, so we just wanted to make sure that we are taking our precautions, and so we're in quarantine. I apologize for the bad timing, but I also appreciate the city's willingness to allow me to continue to make this presentation this evening. Tonight, I wanted to take just a few moments to provide a few updates of what the Flint Hills Regional Council has been working on, discuss our service value that we bring to the city of Manhattan and the region overall. the city of Manhattan and the region overall. So, for purposes of the public, I know the city commission is well aware of what the Flint Hills Regional Council is, but for purposes of the public, just as a reminder, we're a voluntary service association of local Kansas governments to provide services of mutual benefit to the region that are best gained from, through cooperation and partnership. That, our mission is enhancing the economic viability and improving the quality of life through that collaborative effort throughout the Flint Hills. We have a total of 23 active members and you can see on this slide, the either elected official or representative that serves on our board of directors. I wanted to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Linda Morris for serving on our board of directors and I'm not sure what we would do without her. She's our, she serves as our treasurer and has just been a great service to the Flint Hills Regional Council. We also have ex officio members through K-State and Fort Riley and our population ranges from just over about a, from jurisdictions with over just 100 people to over 55,000 being the city of Manhattan. The majority of our counties, we do serve jurisdictions that are outside of these counties shown, but the majority of the counties that we serve in those jurisdictions are within Riley County, Geary County, Morris County, Potawatomi County, Wabunsee County, and then Chase County and Lyon County. And all of those seven counties actually fall within what is Economic Development Administration officially designated Economic Development District. The importance of that is actually pretty significant to our area because it allows us to apply for and obtain or be awarded non-competitive funding that other areas may not have access to. And I'll go through some of that here in just a moment. The benefits of being a member from the city of Manhattan, being a member of our, of our council is that you have a seat on our board of directors. There are opportunities for networking, training, some regional collaboration. We meet on a monthly basis. We also host annual retreat that happens every year with our board of directors to plan for the upcoming year. And over the last several years, we've held a conference that is usually held in the spring. This last year, unfortunately, we had to cancel the conference because of COVID-19, but we have already been talking about the format and the topics that would be in the conference that we're already beginning to plan for 2021. So, stay tuned with more information about that. In my opinion, Flint Hills Regional Council's biggest strength is that it brings in not only that regional collaboration effort, but it brings in external resources. I think a lot of times, there, there's a heavy dependency on funding at the local level and what I strongly believe in is in order to make several of these projects that we've been talking about move forward, you really need to be able to have the ability to bring in external dollars. A lot of times, that can be grants or other sources and what, in my opinion, what makes Flint Hills Regional Council really powerful is that when we're submitting those grant applications, we can show that we have partnerships throughout the region and we're leveraging those partnerships. That makes any application that we submit that much more competitive and our likelihood of receiving that external funding even stronger. So, like I said, the city of Manhattan is within that official Economic Development Administration Economic Development District. And with that, we receive funding that then helps to go towards the implementation of projects within our regional economic development plan. So, real quick, I wanted to take you through just kind of our agenda, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't. We, our board member, our board meetings are open to the public, they're posted on our website at flinthilleregion.org. We have funds that are in the Guamigo Community Foundation Fund, so I wanted to announce and bring to your attention that we will be participating in that on October the 8th as well as from a generous donation just recently, we will be participating in the Greater Geary Community Foundation as well. So, we're excited about that, that's coming up on October the 13th. So, anyone that is interested in making a donation to our council that sees value, we welcome any donations. Like I said, we have a retreat that's going to be coming up in October. We have not only regular operational kind of discussions, but we also bring in guest speakers. So, we had Lyle Butler come in and speak about the Spark Task Force. We've had INBAF this last meeting, given update about where residents are living that are moving here and accepting jobs, both that were already from here and moving into the area where they're living and how they're spread out. And so, we just recently had a presentation on that. And then Trent Armbrus will be presenting at our next meeting about the National Security Crossroad. I always like to announce the Flint Hills Leaders Retreat to save the date for that. That date will be January the 14th through the 15th and it will be held locally this year in Manhattan. And then the Flint Hills Regional Council's conference will be held later in the spring in 2021. So, real quick, we have gone through kind of a rebranding over the last couple of months and we have a constant contact feed to get information out as quickly as we can. So, this is just a sample where we were getting information out about the weekly Spark webinars that were occurring, the Kansas Department of Commerce grant funding that was available for economic development purposes and advertising and trying to promote the Flint Hills Open and Safe pledge as well as the MHK Open and Safe. So, with that, I wanted to also commend Mayor Ready for starting the Manhattan Area Recovery Task Force. I think that's been a significant effort that has been paying off greatly. There are lots of people that tune into that, but it also helps us as a community strategize on what we should be doing next and help provide that guidance and kind of the beat of what's, what's happening out there. So, I was fortunate to be invited to serve as staff support on that task force in the beginning. And then when I made a transition from being the Region Reimagine Director to Flint Hills Regional Council, I asked if I could continue in that role and, and so I've been doing that as well. So, there were opportunities to be able to partner. So, the city of Manhattan, I'd like to commend Vivian and Teresa for their efforts in putting together the MHK Safe and Open pledge. And part of that concept, I, in some of those discussions, I said, "You know, it would be really great if we could do this from a regional standpoint as well." And so, does that look like one website, two websites, one database? What does that look like? And so, it was really great, we were able to partner to basically mirror the city of Manhattan MHK Safe and Open with an additional page and URL that links all to the same place, feeds all the same database for Flint Hills Safe and Open pledge. So, I know y'all have been hearing a lot about that, but I think that that is an effort that's really great. We were able to get the word out, the city of Guamigo was the first to sign up, Chase County has been interested in multiple other jurisdictions. So, I think that that's a great effort. I think we're stronger together as a region. With that, we, we challenged our board and the Friends of the Board to take the pledge and, and that's, and getting the word out there that it's for businesses, organizations and individuals. And then, of course, Flint Hills Regional Council took the pledge. So, Facebook feeds, getting that information out there. One of our biggest reaches within the last month was over 5,000, getting the word out about that Flint Hills Safe and Open as well as the Economic Development Grant Funding that came out. And then, this is a new slide that was not in your packet, I added that prior to this presentation tonight. I wanted to just quickly go through some of the grants, I'm going to give you the details on this, but I thought it might be useful to summarize the grants that we have and the, and the total amounts. So, we have a total of five active grants and one that's pending that will be coming our way here soon. The first one is through the Environmental Protection Agency. We have two from the Economic Development Administration. We have a couple from the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment and then one from the National Endowment for the Arts and Kansas Creative Arts Industry Commission that will be, that's the one that's pending that will be coming soon. But I share that with you because the federal amount, the majority of these are amounts from this year alone with the exception of the Environmental Protection Agency grant. That one was received in October of 2018, but it's a multi-year grant. So, the total value of what we have currently active in federal share is just over 1.9 million with a match of only 186,772. I think that's pretty remarkable. With a total award, if you, if you combine all that, that's over 2.1 million. Of the funding that we have remaining, we have about 1.6 million that we will be expending and working on multiple projects throughout the region, some local to Manhattan and then others that are spread throughout the region. Over the next, some, some of the grants are one year, some are 18 months and some are two years. So, I'm going to go through a few of the details about each one. So, Flint Hills Regional Council, we have a comprehensive economic development strategy. It serves as our regional economic development plan. You may be wondering, what is the difference between this plan and the Region Reimagine Plan? And the goals actually aligned, it's just different levels of detail. I think that's probably the easiest way to, to describe it. The, what's great is this is a requirement from the Economic Development Administration that as representing Economic Development District, we are required to provide updates to this plan on a fairly regular basis. And the Economic Development Administration provides funding at a 50/50 match to actually implement projects that are identified or that support the goals. So, you can see on the slide, the bullet points list out the intent of each of the goals identified in the plan. So, collaboration and partnerships, regional tourism and branding, business retention and expansion, population retention and attraction, entrepreneurship, broadband, childcare access, medical care and leadership opportunities. With that, we identify projects here, here, we're in the fifth year of a, of just a five year grant and this year, what we will be working on is a comprehensive plan for the city of St. George. We have partnered with WTC over the last several months where we've hired a grant writer to help us with three USD distance learning and telemedicine grants that would help the school districts there in Rock Creek, Wabunsee County and Call Valley. And then, we've had several discussions recently with Manhattan city staff to identify what are some of the top priorities that we would be able to help implement that would benefit the city of Manhattan. This next year, the Economic Development Administration is going, the next grant cycle is actually going to be coming up in February or March of 2021 and we're going to be required to update that plan by September of 2021. So, that's a little bit backwards in my mind. We really need to be updating the plan in advance of that application cycle because this year, they're changing that cycle instead of an annual grant application, it will be locking us in for three years. So, our goal is actually to implement the, or update that plan so that we're very clear on what those priorities are and we are applying those dollars exactly how the board and the jurisdictions are and where they're wanting those dollars to go. One of the other opportunities, because we're Economic Development District, we received an invitation and were deemed eligible to apply for non-competitive funding in the amount of 400, it's approximately $400,000 over a two-year period. So, we were just recently, this last month, awarded that 400,000. And the purpose is to have the Flint Hills Regional Council really increase its capacity to help the region in its recovery efforts. So, one of the things that we're going to be doing, the scope was basically written for us, but we, we tailored it to what we felt would benefit our region the most. So, we're going to be developing and working with our economic development partners and jurisdictions to develop a regional economic recovery and resiliency plan. We're in that role, we're going to continue our role to serve as a regional disaster recovery coordinator. And that could be coordination between the city of Manhattan with the Manhattan Area Recovery Task Force, the childcare discussions with Flint Hills Wellness Group or other groups. As topics come up, I've been participating in some broadband discussions with the school district, with the city, in the county to coordinate some of those efforts. So, that's just an example. And then coordination across jurisdictional and across the region as a whole. Really what, the Economic Development Administration saw this money as saying, "Well, we want to be able to partner with those organizations that are already implementing EDA grant dollars and so, and we want to be able to increase their capacity to do more." We knew that there, there would be CARES Act dollars and other grant funding that would be coming our way, you've been living it and breathing it over the last several months. And so, we knew that that money was going to be coming and it would keep coming from all different agencies throughout. And so, we want to be able to increase our capacity to be able to take advantage of those dollars and bring as much external dollars to our region as we can. So, we're going to be hiring one staff member that would then help increase that capacity just for the life of the grant. So, it'd be a temporary position, a planner, a grant manager type position. The, we will also have opportunities to partner with existing groups that are out there providing training like SBDC, the Chamber or any other group out there that, that we could help get the word out or partner on those training opportunities so that businesses are stronger. Should, should there, should we start going backwards and go towards shutdown? Hopefully, we don't. But if we do, what can we do to help those businesses be stronger? And so, we're going to be able to partner and, and help at least promote some of those programs. And then, we're going to be developing a needs assessment system that will allow any entity to submit unfunded needs as it relates to COVID and then use the system long-term to help us implement our regional economic development plan so that we have baseline information so that when we identify and strategize, but when we identify where there's different grant funding coming in, what's eligible and if we put a strategy to it, we're going to get that much closer to getting the project accomplished. Flint Hills Regional Council is also a huge supporter of Fort Riley. There's a lot of efforts and has been since the inception of the council in 2010 to support and do everything that we can to support the military operations and its mission to be, to be mission ready, but to also protect the base from different efforts in the surrounding communities. So, just this last June, there was a proposal, a couple, two proposals that were submitted. I want to recognize real quick Janet Nichols. She is the military liaison with the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce and she took it upon herself to coordinate and facilitate meetings with multiple jurisdictions to have a discussion about what projects should be submitted on this defense community infrastructure pilot program. And two proposals were submitted. Unfortunately, they are not moving forward, but with that though, it was a great effort. But with that though, it was a great effort, and what we're going to do is learn from this last round. We're going to meet on a quarterly basis and get prepared for the next round in either May or June of next year. Angela Schnee from the city of Ogden and Marissa Jones Flagette were the two main staff members in Junction City and the city of Ogden that worked really hard to get those applications or those proposals moving forward. So I appreciate their efforts and Craig Bender, Alan Dinkle, and Lindsay Miller as well. So we're going to continue those discussions. The other, the big one that you've been hearing about for years and years is our support and implementation of our joint land use study, which was done several years ago. We are wrapping up the first phase, implementation phase, grant that was awarded in May of 2018. We're finalizing that last project. And just in July, we were awarded another $518,000 for implementation of Phase Two. That will extend over the next 18 months. And so between this award and the CARES award, it's about $918,000 that we've gotten in in just over the last couple of months. So the scopes that are within that project, the ones that benefit the city of Manhattan the most is going to be this military number six on the slide. It's the military installation resiliency. Fort Riley has gone through a lot of effort to ensure that its communication systems, electricity, all of those things are really sound. So if a natural or man-made disaster were to occur, that they're in good shape to make sure that that line of communication remains open. So now it is something that we're going to be working on with the surrounding communities to identify where there may be gaps and where we can make improvements. And so the city of Manhattan will be participating in that particular one. And there are some other efforts related to wind turbine legislation, creating potential buffers around military installations. The wind turbines can interfere with their training and the radar, so we want to make sure that that's protected. There's some educational and outreach efforts that the Flint Hills Regional Council is going to be providing, housing study, housing conditions assessment in Junction City, unmaintained aircraft system corridor. This is kind of a Phase Two project that will be implemented, a Green Valley Transportation Study in Potawatomi County. And then the last one was just GIS software, which the Flint Hills Regional Council just recently purchased. Okay, the next one is still pending. It is with the National Endowment for the Arts and the Kansas Creative Arts Industry Commission. This one is about a $40,000 grant award, 50-50 match, meaning 20,000 is from the award, and we need to be able to match it with another 20,000. What this is going to do is it's a project that's actually been talked with among the art and cultural entities over the last probably two and a half years. We are going to be designing a website that then is highlighting the artists, the museums, the theaters, all of those things throughout the region, and pull all of those assets together. So whether you live here or you live elsewhere, you can come and take a tour and go explore all the wonderful arts and cultural assets that we have to offer here in the Flint Hills. So I think that's a really exciting project up and coming. Okay, the Brownfields Project. We have, like I mentioned earlier, there was an award in October of 2018. There has been a coalition and advisory board that's been meeting over the last couple of years. I want to recognize Eric Cattell and Randy for their participation in those. And more recently, Jason Hilgers and others have gotten involved to really hone in and identify, is there an area plan that could be done that would help spark redevelopment? Or are there properties that are interested in redeveloping and they know that they would need an environmental assessment Phase One or Phase Two before that transition happens? And so we've been working to identify those. This slide has also changed from what was in your packet because we actually had a meeting and just honed in on the value even more. I had provided a range before, but we believe the value out of this that the city of Manhattan would receive is around $200,000, and this is kind of a rough estimate. But that's what we're thinking at this point, identifying two different area plans that we would be able to start moving forward. With that, we have a timeline. Each of those are probably about a six-month process, and we are in the process of expending for the entire award $504,000 over the next one year, with that period ending next September, so a year from right now. And Flint Hills Regional Council, like I said, we're going through a rebranding, and we are going to be launching a new website here in the future, so stay tuned for more information about that. And then we attempted, Jana Williams, I need to recognize her too. She served as the interim director for the last several months, and she really has worked really hard for our organization and positioned us where we are today. So I really appreciate all of her efforts. She worked really hard on the J-Loose and the CARES Act and was doing almost by herself. We have one other Vista employee named Christina, and she does an excellent job as well. Okay, so what I wanted to do, we worked and looked through the different grants and tried to divide it up as logically as we could of what the value of each community, including Riley County, but what Manhattan's value would be for each grant. And as you can see, the total service value for the city of Manhattan is about two, we estimate around 224,000 with the total value to the county about 337,000. Like I said, we are a service membership organization with each of the jurisdictions that are members, and our dues are based on the 2010 census population. And so the dues that Manhattan has been paying is about $31,369. So this is just kind of summarizing those and then the value that we provide. So most directly, the anticipated service value is coming really from that Brownfields Project and the J-Loose Phase Two. But indirectly, there will be definitely benefits. I feel like I spend a lot of my time actually on the Manhattan Area Recovery Task Force. There will be benefits from that project as well, our economic development planning partnership, as well as a portion of the arts. One of the things that I've kind of done in our transition between the Region Reimagine position and my Flint Hills role is just kind of volunteered to keep up as best as we could the Region Reimagine website. So if you go to that website, I'm still updating the local health orders from Riley County, Potawatomi County, and Gary County because that became kind of a source to go to to see all the information from those three counties altogether. And so I just continue to do that for now. We will be working on an updated website with Flint Hills Regional Council. And with our efforts in developing a regional recovery task force, a lot of, or some of that information, as well as those planning efforts, may be transferred over to there. And I've been working with Jason Smith as well, and we've been identifying ways to partner even more. So with that, I open it up for any questions you may have.
Thanks a lot, Kristi. Very comprehensive, and I think it's been a while since we heard about everything the regional Flint Hills Regional Council does. So thank you, I appreciate you taking the time to present all of that. Any questions or comments for Kristi? And we are going to be deciding on the membership this evening.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the Economic Development District, you have Chase and Lion County asterisk there, and I, you know, I don't see Emporia or Lion County having a member, but they are considered in the service area. Just curious about that. How do we get Emporia to start pulling their weight for the Flint Hills region?
So I think I heard everything except for the last little part. How do we get the what?
How do we get Emporia involved?
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so Emporia, Lion County, and Chase County were prior members of the Flint Hills Regional Council. They are no longer a member, but I would like to say that they are still a part of the Economic Development District officially, and there are still projects that we're partnering with them on. So for example, the Brownfields Project, it was beneficial to apply on their end and our end as well on that particular grant application, is my understanding, in 2018. And so they are actually implementing some projects, environmental assessments, Phase One. In fact, I just signed some access agreements a couple of months ago. So they are taking advantage of some of those dollars, but it was beneficial. I think it made our grant application that much stronger because they were a part of that. In Chase County, actually, that was one of the first places that I went to when I came on board with Flint Hills Regional Council. I met with one of their contractors that works with the Chase County Chamber there. And so really what it's, what the goal is, is there may be different priorities in some of the more urban areas versus the rural areas. And so it's really trying to identify where everything fits in, what everyone's priorities are, and then how we can bring that value back to them. We had attended the Flint Hills Tourism Coalition Meeting. Kara with the Wamigo Chamber had invited me. She's the head of that group right now. And so she had invited me to present on the Flint Hills Safe and Open Pledge that we were taking. And Chase County Chamber of Commerce was actually one of the first ones, they were attending that meeting, and they were one of the first ones to respond back saying that they were interested in taking the pledge and participating. So, you know, I think it's a work in progress to get them back on board. I've been here just a couple of months, and so I still have a lot of work to do though. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Linda Morris, I would just say that we're making every effort to remake new, make what? Remake contacts with Lion County and Emporia to motivate them, I guess, to participate in the Flint Hills region again. There are benefits to them. Some of these grants, they are qualified, they're able to participate in even without being a member of our Regional Council. So that's one piece too. Some of the others, they aren't eligible because they're not participants. So we're going to try and impress upon them the value that they will receive. It also is true that more of the activity ends up being, occurs up here in the north end, Manhattan, Junction City, Wamigo, and Emporia is at the far end of the district. And so it's hard to balance things perfectly so everyone feels valued. And so we're going to, but some of these EPA cleanup sites were in Emporia. They were so interested, I went to a meeting, and they were really interested in being a part of that. So it comes and goes as elected officials come and go. And we just hit a couple in the Emporia-Lion County area that never, I just didn't see the value, I guess, at the time. So I think maybe we'll have a new crop of elected officials that we'll try to approach.
Any other comments for Kristi? I see Bruce McMillan is here. Would you like to say a few words about the Flint Hills Regional Council? I know I've attended a few meetings last year when they were doing, I think it was last year, and you're always there. So I just wanted to see, I just wanted to open it up for you to say a few words if you'd like. You don't have to though.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I was attending just simply to hear the presentation. I anticipated that Kristi would be here this evening, and then she informed me of the quarantine that has occurred. Just briefly, I served as the steering committee chair that formed the council 10 years ago. Ron Fear was heavily involved in that effort as well as other elected officials. And for probably 10 years before that, we were meeting as tri-county congress and other efforts for the entire region at that time. This has been very, very important to the region, I think, as we have seen the evolution of the organization continue. And to focus just a moment on Commissioner Morris's comment, what is necessary in addressing the question that Commissioner Estenbrook mentioned is we need to continue to educate the candidates that are running for our public offices. And some of that falls upon the current elected officials as they see up-and-comers coming, and to inform them of the value, the need, and the overall economic development that collaboration comes from. This whole effort grew out of a Chamber of Commerce Manhattan study in 1989 called Vision 20, and we have well past the year 2000 now. And so we're very glad that the organization continues. I do continue to monitor, which is really, I call myself a member of the Peanut Gallery, and I had the opportunity to be asked to serve on the committee that hired Kristi, and I was humbled and very appreciative of that opportunity as well. So thank you for allowing me to say a few things here. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate your comments. I would, like I said, I've attended a few meetings, and I hope if the Commissioners appear when they do go back in person, or if you have a Zoom meeting, to just watch all of the folks that are involved in all of the discussions that are happening that we are not really aware of, but have a huge impact on our community. And I'm so glad that we were able to get Kristi Rodriguez from Region Reimagine in the Manhattan Chamber to be the director for the Flint Hills Regional Council. That is such a huge asset because she already has those partnerships, now those collaborations. She's built those relationships, and now to elevate it to the counties, the rest of the region, is really terrific for all of us. And it just shows the way you just were able to easily transition from one to the other. And I'm sure, I think even on the, I haven't been to the Regional Council website while you're still working on it, but I'm sure there's lots of different health orders you probably need to be aware of, and each county or each school district or each community has different needs. But to see one big package put together as we speak to it in a holistic manner, I think you're a great resource to have. And I know you're easily accessible, and you answer questions very quickly, and then if you don't know, I'm sure you have somebody who does know all of these things. And I'm also glad that you're going to be going to the greater foundations, I didn't want to say greater community, Manhattan Community Foundations, but to the other communities to also have them contribute and donate to the Flint Hills Regional Council. I don't know if we have to make a motion on membership, or there's no motion or anything tonight, right?
No, this was just meant to be an update.
Update, okay. Are there any other comments for Kristi?
Just that I would just like to say that I'm enthusiastic about Kristi's leadership. She brings a lot of energy. She and Jana Williams, I think, are just going to be dynamite working together. So I'm really encouraged. So I'm really encouraged and enthusiastic about the future of the Regional Council and the work that they can, that benefit to all of the partners. So thanks, Kristi.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, if there are no other comments, is that it, Ron, for the evening? Thank you. We will adjourn for, for tonight's meeting. Thank you all.